Okay, so the board seems to be together. Good afternoon, we're gonna bring our meeting to order on April fourteenth at 5:00 P. M. Uh, may I please have approval of the agenda? What?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Margot and Tristan. We have to do a pledge of allegiance, I think, I see it. Probably should have done that first, um. Let's see, Mr. Spitz, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Mr. Spitz is mic-ing, there we go.
I would, I would very much. Uh, I'm looking around for a flag. Ready? Begin, I pledge with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of to stand. One nation, one liberty, and
Thank you, Mr. Spitz, can everybody mute themselves, please? We're gonna begin our meeting. Okay, Dr. Breggy, do you have a report from closed session?
Uh, there was no action in closed session this evening.
Thank you for that. We are going to move.
Hi Isabel, will you take a vote on the approval of the agenda, please?
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
Um, I knew I forgot something, it's difficult to go back and forth between um, frames here, okay, so all those in favor for the approval of the agenda?
Aye.
Okay, so that's five zero, is Thomas Recupero with us? Is our student board member with us?
No, Thomas, he's that hasn't joined the meeting yet.
Okay, but he has the information, correct?
Yeah, let me, I'm gonna, I'll send it to him again.
Okay, so thank you for that approval, I'm just in the meantime, gonna move the agenda forward. Um, let's see, we have some public comment, Mrs. Marcus, I understand you have two letters that you wanted to read, and so I'll defer to you for those two letters, and then I'll follow up with the other two letters that I received.
Okay, I'm ready to go.
Thank you, could you please start that, thank you.
Okay, dear honorable board vice president, Mrs. Marcus, I am Angela Bradbury, the senior daughter of Mr. Bradbury at the Beverly Hills High School, and Christie Bradbury, an I.A. at Horace Mann School. I would like to speak about the senior events. I fully understand that some events are lost due to the current crisis which breaks my heart, but graduation cannot be something that my class loses. This ceremony is something I've been looking forward to since I started at Beverly and for thirteen years as a student of Beverly Hills Unified School District. My four older siblings all graduated from Beverly Hills High School two thousand four, two thousand six, two thousand eight, two thousand ten, and as a child I attended all their high school graduations plus their college graduations. Finally, this year it would be their turn to come support and cheer for me as I graduate from high school. But now I fear that this special opportunity may never happen. I urge you and the Board of Education, please to consider making graduation possible once this pandemic has passed. Not just an online version of it, but a live ceremony that all family and friends can attend at Beverly Hills High School, even if it's in the summer. I want to be able to take a photo while I receive my diploma, take pictures and celebrate with my classmates, and rejoice with my family. Graduation is not just an event, but a rite of passage from childhood to independent adulthood. Please don't let my class be the only one to never experiences this. Thank you for your time, sincerely, Angela Bradbury. Uh, Beverly Hills High Class of two thousand and two, uh, twenty. And I have one more, uh, let me see if I can find it very quickly because I have to go back into my email.
I can, I can then read the one
I'm looking for, Isabel.
Yes, I will do that, can you mute yourself, Mrs. Marcus?
Uh?
Okay, thank you, um, let's see here.
Thomas Recupero has joined the meeting.
Sorry, I'm just looking it up, um. Okay, the next letter is from Sharon Hansen. I have three daughters, one graduated in two thousand seventeen from Beverly Hills High School and now attends Michigan State University. My daughter is a senior at Beverly Hills High School and my youngest daughter is a sophomore at Beverly Hills High. I would like B.H. U.S.D. to be creative and think out of the box on how we can do a formal graduation ceremony for the two thousand twenty graduating class, even if the graduation ceremony is delayed for a few weeks. You could even limit the number of guests who can attend and sit everyone six feet away from each other. The football field would definitely be large enough for that. I think it would be incredibly horrible, terrible, for these kids not to have a graduation experience that every other student will have when they graduate from Beverly Hills High School. The final days of their senior year have been taken away from them to the least, the least that we can do is give them their, the graduation, send off, send them off, and they have worked so hard for twelve years in the making and even even have a prom. My vote is that we come together as a community and figure out a way to make this possible for our kids. I think my middle daughter deserves a formal graduation, just like her older sister, and one I feel like her younger sister will experience in two thousand twenty, twenty-two, Sharon Hansen. Okay, and let's see, I think that's it from my end, there are a few others that I've entered into the record, and, oh, I have one more, from Neil Chef. Dear Board members, I would like to add my request to the many who want to see their seniors have some semblance of normal life before leaving their Beverly Hills High School experience and all the accomplishments as they head for college and careers. Our daughter Rebecca, along with many other classmates, have invested so much into their high school years culminating with a senior year where she was part of the Madribles, the dance company, and the musical theater, spending countless hours in after-school time devoted to musical programs, a big success, and reflect well on her school and the community. Graduation is an opportunity for her family and community to say job well done, and show our pride and gratitude, and all of our seniors have done to get this point in their lives. To leave Beverly Hills High School without a ceremony or opportunity to acknowledge all of their work, hard work, would be a shame, and leave such a sad recollection of what should have been such a great time in their lives. We hope you will find the means to make graduation happen and shine a bitter light in into all of our seniors' lives as we all hope for speedy recovery to this nightmare we are all living through. Thank you for your hard work, and that again is from Rachel Ann Neil Chef. Okay, Mrs. Marcus? Okay, Mrs. Marcus, you need to unmute yourself. We can hear you, Mrs. Marcus. Mrs. Marcus, can you hear me? Can you unmute yourself? Okay, we're having issues unmuting, um. We're going to move on, and we'll enter that last letter that she has into the record.
Can I just jump in, run you Mrs. Marcus, please, because you're hosting the meeting, can you please unmute Mrs. Marcus?
If it, if that were the case, I would control it, I wouldn't ask anybody to turn it off or on. There is no capacity to unmute, which I mentioned in the beginning. The muting option is only at your face. So it's a one-way, if anybody wants her to talk, someone should phone her on the telephone and call her and tell her to unmute her.
Okay, so we're gonna move our meeting forward, thank you for that, uh, we're gonna move on to, uh, let's see here. Sorry, it's just difficult to go back and forth, uh, we've already approved communication from board, okay, so we're gonna go to, um, item number eight, communication for board members, discussion of graduation promotions, um, prom awards, musical and musicals and concerts. Can I please have a motion for the approval of that item, so we can discuss?
I move approval of item eight.
It's a discussion item.
Yes.
We don't need to approve, I know, we don't need to vote on a discussion item.
I didn't say we're voting, no, I said an approval, just, just to move, so we can discuss, that's what I said. Can I have a motion? Thank you Tristan, you were right, go ahead.
I move approval of discussion of graduation promotion, prom awards, musicals, and concerts, item number eight, eight.
Okay, and can I have a second? I'll second that, thank you, Tristan. Um, let's see here. Um, so Thomas Recupero want, and, you know, and I spoke about this, and so we put this on the agenda together, and then subsequently I received another email from uh, Mrs. Walker Schuman and Mr. Margot asking for this item to also be, um, put on the agenda. So I'm gonna start off, you know, the reason we wanted to discuss this, I, I can't speak for my other two, uh, latter colleagues, but uh, we wanted to really have a discussion about how COVID nineteen, the impacts of COVID nineteen, and how this obviously, um, has caused and effect as to, you know, the dates that we had, that we had, um, set in stone for celebrations. And so we thought it was a proper discussion to have, and I'm gonna turn it over to board member Recupero. Um, I, I understand he has a lot to say about this issue, obviously, as he's a senior, and, uh, represents the voice of students on our board, so, Mr. Recupero, if you're ready, I'll defer to you.
Awesome, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to start off by saying, like, I understand how difficult these times are, uh, for everyone in the district and our community and the world, but um, especially students who are looking forward to whether that was their final musical, their spring orchestra concert, their final baseball game, prom, and even graduation. Um, I do feel your pain, I'm right here with you. Um, one group in particular is the graduating seniors, after three long years in high school, or even twelve in the district, it is one of the hardest things to not be able to walk onto that stage on June fourth and receive your diploma. Sadly, the current circumstances prohibit these events from occurring. However, I'm hoping and will do everything I can to make sure we can have these events when the social distancing guidelines permit. In fact, I was thinking of condensing the senior events, graduations, and other award ceremonies into a week sometime in late June or July before August when seniors would start to move away for college. Although a date cannot be determined just yet, I'm hoping in the coming weeks when more information is available, we will have a better timeline. An example of what that week would look like. Tuesday afternoon, a senior sunset when seniors gather on the football field to watch a video of the past four years at the high school, and a time for everyone to bond one last time. Wednesday, senior brunch and yearbook signing in the cafeteria. Hopefully, teachers would attend as well, followed by a pen and party, and finally, the senior award ceremony in the evening. Thursday night would be prom, in fact, we sent out a poll to the seniors at the high school and we received a hundred sixty-eight responses from about, from about three hundred twenty seniors. A hundred sixty-two students, or ninety-six point four percent, were in favor of having a prom sometime during the summer. Um, and finally, the week would, would conclude on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday with a graduation ceremony. Um, I, I think that everyone is on board with this, even though there are some obstacles, but I really think we can make this happen. Um, I want to reiterate, though, that this is all contingent on whether mass gatherings can occur at some point during the summer. Because it is still uncertain whether mass gatherings will be permitted, I do think we should move forward with um, a virtual graduation, so the seniors will have something just in case this cannot occur.
Okay, well, Noah? Mr. Margot, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, I, I had agreed, uh, to Tristan to put this on the agenda because she asked for a second and I'm I'm a team player, um, my, my first comment would be that, um, this is the only part of this that would be in the purview of the board, per se, is if something came to us as far as an expense, like the risers for graduation, um, whatever kind of project that the admin and the student body work out, um, even I guess the PTAs and PTSAs are involved, you know, I, I would say that that would be their business as usual. Um, I have a graduating eighth grader and a graduating senior, do I want there to be a graduation? Absolutely, I don't want them to be deprived of that. But like Thomas pointed out, um, we are in a different time now and the rules have changed. So I was just speaking to somebody on the break here, if we, um, want to hold something over the summer, that's contingent on, on the county-state, uh, guidelines, um, we could plan something loosely, but I, I have a feeling that large gatherings are not coming back anytime soon. Um, even if the life starts to get back to normal, that would be great, but I think the last thing to come into that um, with the new normal are gonna be large gatherings. Um, I would like to hear from administrators, myself, because I think that how school sites celebrate graduations is really up to them in the end, it's not up to us. Um, I'm, I am happy, though, that we're having this conversation in public, so people can put their fears away, the fact that the board is thinking about canceling graduation. That, I think, is the most absurd thing I've heard about. Um, we have nothing to do with having or not having graduation. This particular instance, it's COVID nineteen that has canceled graduation right now, and it will be most likely the governor, the, the county supervisors, and our own city council um, that create the environment to allow graduation to occur. So we are all at the behest of them because of the nature of the large gathering. So I, I would like to hear from the administrators, or Mrs. Hacker, you can defer to board members first, uh, thank you very much.
Yeah, so I, I, I thought that for the, for purposes of the conversation, it was appropriate to obviously invite our administrators, and so as you can see, I believe, uh, Mr. Bugby, Mr. Allen, I believe Mrs. Kaber's on, although I might have missed her coming on, and Mr. Mead are all with us, um, so that we can have this discussion with their, uh, presence and their voice. So I'm gonna continue down the path of going on to Mr. Spitz, and then we can have, um, administration chime in, um, Mr. Spitz.
Well, uh, I support this concept uh, one hundred percent of having, uh, these events. I assume that it can't be too late in the summer because too many of the graduating seniors would be away, is that true? Yes? No? To Cooper Tina?
No, I think, um, Mr. Spitz, that's a great question, um, and it's, it's, it's the one thing that, um, if we had that, that crystal ball, um, it, it would be perfect, because, you know, how late is too late in the summer? Uh, but that's something that, um, I know that the, uh, site administration and the cabinet are working together, um, and, uh, will also be working with students, uh, like, uh, Mr. Recupero, so that we can, uh, get their input too, because it's you, you wanna, you wanna find a time where it is, you know, it's, it's not too late to where nobody shows, um, but the only way we're gonna know that is if we start to do what Thomas has done, and that start collecting that data.
Well, I just want to say that, uh, I think you're on the right track, and, um, I would support this one hundred percent and hope that it could come to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz, this is Walker Schuman.
So I, I wanted to ask this to be on the agenda, because, uh, as Noah had said, we were hearing a lot of parents, um, aggrieved and very concerned that there was a rumor that the board was gonna cancel graduation. Um, I, I agree with what he said, that's not, um, the position that we've taken, that's not something we've weighed in on, I agree that, uh, you know, the social distancing measures are something that we have to follow, the guidelines of the state and public health officials. Um, but I wanted to kind of, uh, just put it out there that I think that we can get creative, I would love for the seniors to have all of these opportunities to observe these milestone events. Um, I, I was just over this last week on Facebook, I, my thirty-year, uh, thirty-year reunion is next year, and so a lot of the conversation has started about where to have it, how to observe it, and, and a lot of the things that go along with it are the, you know, paraphernalia that went along with graduation, so prom pictures and senior portraits and graduation pictures, and all of these things started resurfacing on the Facebook, uh, group for the class of nineteen ninety-one. Um, and it reminded me how much there is that these seniors are losing, um, by not having the opportunity to do this, so I think it would be, um, I would like to encourage, uh, admin staff and parents and students alike to be really creative, to come up with some ideas of how we can make some of these things happen, uh, so that the seniors don't lose out on all of these opportunities, and, um, you know, obviously, we don't want to do anything that puts anybody at risk. Um, but I'd, I'd really like to get behind and support the idea of, um, you know, being flexible and agile, but making this a priority, so that we can hopefully, um, have some kind of gathering, even if it's small, even if we all have to be six feet apart, even if it's only immediate families um, of the graduate, uh, I think it would be really great, to the extent that we can do something to mark this occasion or these occasions for the eighth graders and the seniors, and, and, you know, to the extent that we can for the fifth grade graduates too, moving on. Um, I think it'd be really important, and it's no small and it's no small, um, you know, remark that this is our first year of having a middle school, of having all of our eighth graders together, and that this year they don't get to actually graduate together, so to the extent that we can get behind the effort to try and make sure that these things happen uh, for these students and families, I think that we should. That's my viewpoint.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus.
It seems she's still having trouble with her sound, uh, you might want to.
Yeah, Ms. Marcus, maybe you wanna get off and call back in, and, uh, we we can try, we can, we can take your turn then, I'll go first, if that's okay. Um, so, Ms. Marcus, if you can, I would, I would ask that you click off and then return back to the chat room. Okay, so what I would say is this, that, you know, we know, I agree with everything that everyone has said so far. Um, COVID nineteen has obviously dragged us into a situation where it has, has caused us to not return to the physical facilities, to our height, to our schools, um, until, until the beginning of the fall, but we have, we have taken, you know, the board has taken, um, supported Dr. Breggy and in making sure that we're not returning to this, you know, back to school this school year, but beyond June fourth, we have not given direction, and there has been no recommendation at this point that we know of from Laco or from the state, I mean, we know that they're saying be alert, careful.
Not the right one.
Ms. Marcus, you're on, you're here now, I can hear you, can you mute yourself? Oh, I will, I will return to you as soon as I'm done, because we were waiting for you to come back, thank you, I can hear you now. So basically, what I think we should remain, we should remain open, just as we were proactive right before taking initiative, uh, before spring break, and, and taking all the precautions available to us and giving ourselves fourteen days to come back to school. And then, in that fourteen-day period, we saw that the state and Laco gave direction to the school districts in having, and, and really recommending that we not come back, um, this semester, right? So I think we should remain open, um, and alert to the information that is forthcoming from the state of California and Laco and Department of Education. And if they, um, you know, like Noah said, if, if the arrangement is such that for the summer large groups cannot convene, then we should follow that ordinance, but it, it is only April, and April looked very different from March, and I would assume May will look different from March and April, and hopefully June and July will look very different. Um, and the experience of those two months will be very different to anything that we've experienced for March and April. So I think that the board, you know, should, postponing the graduation would be ideal, and also planning ahead for not having that happen, so the best thing that we can do is prepare for the worst and plan for the best, and so we should, we should, I think, be we should have consensus, or try to reach consensus, to give direction, support, administration, if we can. If we're given the green light from the state of California to, that allows us that wiggle room to have a, a group convene, a graduation, an event of that nature, then I think we should, we should allow for that to happen. Taking, you know, the, the distinct, the social distancing, um, rules and guidelines, of course, and to you know, very seriously, and, and making those, um, be part of how we structure our graduations, but I think we should try to postpone at this point to cancel or to say, you know, let's just think out of the box and get creative, to me, to me, that suggests not having a physical graduation, and of course, I'm all for thinking out of the box and thinking of Plan B, but I think Plan A should be postponing these events, and so, um, that would be my recommendation as one board member, I think I heard Mel agree with that. I'm not sure if Tristan was pointing to the direction of postponing, I heard her saying smaller gatherings. Um, I, I think that means a graduation, but I'm not really sure, so, you know, Tristan, you can clarify that after I let Mrs. Marcus speak, and I'm gonna be quite, defer now to Mrs. Marcus.
Can you hear me? Can, can you hear me?
Yes, Mrs. Marcus.
I'm having, I'm very frustrated right now, um.
I can hear you, Mrs. Marcus, we can hear you.
Well, I just had the message that I was supposed to read up, and, okay, so, um, this is from Christie Bradbury, I would like to take that opportunity now that I got it up. Uh, she's an I.A. at Horace Mann, wife of Bill Bradbury, Beverly Hills High School instrumental music teacher, and mother of senior Angela Bradbury. These are unique and difficult times for all of us at B.H. U.S.D., but especially for our graduating seniors. I think all of the celebrations they have looked forward to for thirteen years, Quest Awards, Senior Awards Night, Grad Night, Prom, and especially graduation. While I completely understand that some of these celebrations are lost, we must find ways to do as much as we can for these students. I want to thank each of you for your tireless work to make school as normal as possible for every Beverly Hills High School student, every Beverly Hills Unified School District student. You, the administrators and counselors, and all the teachers are true heroes to me. So many are always, so many are already discussing ways to celebrate our seniors, even though things will look different from what they have traditionally been done. Thank you. Even though ideas are rolling around for virtual or online graduations, which I absolutely love, I must speak to you about making sure we plan and hold a live graduation ceremony at Beverly Hills High School for the class of two thousand and twenty. I think of parents who only have one child of that, as a senior, and they will never get this back again. I think of my daughter, the youngest of five B.H.H.S. graduates, and how she has anticipated her siblings finally getting to celebrate her graduation. It's supposed to be her turn, their turn. I fully understand the myriad of hurdles to overcome in order to make this happen once this pandemic is in our past. I realize it would occur during time when faculty are not contracted to work. However, I know that these teachers and administrators love our seniors and will do whatever it takes to see them celebrated in a way that is meaningful to them and their families. I know this because of the way they have worked tirelessly, days and nights, and weekends, to make distance learning meaningful. Please, as you discuss senior activities and especially graduation, make what seems impossible become possible for the class of two thousand twenty. I am ready to do whatever is needed to make this happen. Thank you for your time, respectfully, Christie Bradbury. Now I can get on to my comment. I have agreed with everything that's been said so far, I think the contingency plans have to be made, so that we will be able to have something when and if we are able to have something, I think to postpone something right now, or to say that it's not gonna happen or cancel, I don't think we can do that right now. I think what we have to do is to make plans, Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, whatever it is, with the contingencies of what might be possible to accommodate some sort of a graduation ceremony for the students. I'm not sure about all the other activities, like the prom night and senior awards and all of those, but I do believe that there has to be some way that we need to think about a graduation with some kind of a plan uh, for, because things can change, they're so fluid right now, we don't know what it's gonna be like come June fourth even, so we can't really put any option out of the way. I think we just need to have some contingencies, but I do think we need to have a contingency of some kind of a graduation when it might be possible, but mark my word for one thing, in no way will I ever endorse any activity will, that will put the health and safety of our students in jeopardy for that reason. So I just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Mrs. Marcus, and I, I think that the board, I would say, shares that sentiment, and none of us wanna put our kids or anyone in harm's way, so I want to clarify that. put our kids or anyone in harm's way. So I wanna clarify that for, on behalf of the entire board. And if anyone disagrees, please disagree with me now. But I think you would re-agree with that. Um, let's see, before we go to Dr. Breggy, Tristan, did you wanna clarify that point for us, which you meant by smaller groups? Just, I think it would be helpful to clarify that for the administration before they take, take it on. And then, Dr. Breggy, I know you're next.
I was, I was just suggesting that if we end up at a point where the governor says um, gatherings are okay in groups of, let's say, 50 or, you know, some number around there, even 100, um, that we may wanna consider having a graduation where we are only allowing immediate family to come, not extended family and friends. I know that that's gonna be heartbreaking for some, but if that's the only way that we could physically do a graduation, then I would rather that than not have a physical graduation. But you know, so much of this is contingent upon what happens over the next couple of months.
Right.
And I think we have to defer to, you know, the leadership from the governor and the, and public health.
Right. And I guess, just to clarify, we would be, all of us would be willing to abide, obviously, by whatever rules and guidelines are set by, you know, the governor's office, Laco, and Department of Education. We, I think we're in agreement with that. Okay, um, Dr. Breggy.
So I just wanted to um, say, I, I know that we're kind of in a period of time right now where there's um, like, information fatigue when it comes to COVID-19. And so I think a lot of the, the public is at a point now where um, you know, we start hearing uh, the governor or uh, the superintendent from LAUSD that is making decisions that um, are making headline news because uh, there, there's such a large organization that um, it kinda sends panic through uh, the communities. And so um, you know, there's a lot of feedback that we're getting about, um, you know, don't cancel graduation. And I just, like you have said, I wanna reassure everyone that um, we have not made those plans. We've not publicly stated that. But I can understand that when um, things are happening around us and decisions are being made um, for the entire summer and um, events being canceled, that, that people automatically assume. Um, one of the nice things about what's happening in the state of California is that the governor is letting the local control um, make these types of decisions. And, and we're very thankful for that because we're such a different organization than uh, many of the other school districts. Um, I do wanna say that um, you know, I think two things need to happen here, and, and I'm so glad that our principals have joined us because um, we have a really good, solid team. And um, and it's important that we all share a voice and hear um, all the voices from this, this leadership team. Um, but it's really important for people to realize that really two things need to happen here. Um, we, we do need to make sure that we create something memorable uh, for our students. And I'm talking about graduation um, at uh, BVMS and the high school. Um, and so we've already had some discussions, very productive conversations. Um, Rebecca, um, Mark Mead, Kevin Allen, and myself have already started to um, look at a couple proposals uh, to do something that's, you know, of course, we wanna, we wanna look at keeping a graduation. But two things happening at the same time have to happen. So looking at that postponement or whatever that is going to look like is key, because we're not making a decision to cancel right now. So, so that is absolutely on the table. What will it look like? Um, how many people will attend? Where will it be? All of those things, but those are still uh, going to be in a series of planning. But what has to happen right away is creating something that's, that's memorable, that, that, that our students deserve, especially after this type of year that they've had. Um, we know that we can't do that alone. Um, I would like for uh, a presentation to happen to the board in the next few days uh, that is a proposal to get some, some professional help with uh, creating um, a, a keepsake video uh, movie for our students. And, and that's not because we're making a decision about canceling. What, what I would hope in the best of both worlds would be that we have something so innovative and so creative that our students can keep and also have a graduation, if that's possible. Um, but we can't just pick one. We believe that, that our kids should have choices and putting something together that is um, that, that's done well, that's done professionally, that will work with us um, and help us create these memories and even have something where it, 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 opening day may be for uh, a, a movie, uh, which we've got a lot of ideas, could happen like on graduation day. Um, you know, and again, it could be in conjunction with graduation. Uh, but we have to plan for two things. So um, we've had a conversation that kicked off uh, last week or the week before. Um, and we've got a lot of great ideas. And so um, I know that I want our principals to talk a little bit about um, some thoughts and ideas that they have. But um, we wanna be able to support our sites. We wanna be able to support our students. Um, I definitely wanna get uh, Thomas into uh, the conversation um, about what this could possibly look like. But I really do think that just, there's, things have to happen at the same time. And it, it's just a series of planning. And I think that we have the right people and the right team to, to do it. Um, one thing I just wanna add, um, you know, all the expense that comes with graduation, all the vendors that we use for chairs and, and stages and um, stands and those types of things. Uh, we did check out with them that um, as you can imagine, uh, people are canceling left and right with these rental companies. And so we did verify that um, we don't have to make any of those decisions about canceling, uh, any work with our vendors, which is, of course, tens of thousands of dollars, until May 15th. So we, we, we built in some time and the partnerships that we have with our vendors does not mean that we need to make a decision by next week. So I know people wanna know what's going on, but it is changing very quickly. Um, sometimes it's two steps forward and one step back. I get that. Um, but I don't think that we're in a position where we have to make that decision right now. The decision that we need to make right now is, how can we move forward, do something creative, innovative uh, professionally, so that we could recognize our students. And so we're prepared to do that. And uh, I'll circle, circle back at the end. Um, I just would like to meet with the board to share what those proposals would look like because there's an expense that goes with that. But I think our students deserve and our parents deserve um, something memorable uh, because it's been anything but that the last uh, couple of months. Uh, so I, you know, I'm, I'm thankful to um, uh, Mr. Mead and Mr. Allen, uh, who's joined us. If you guys wanna jump in and, and talk a little bit about what you see happening.
Mark, do you wanna go first?
So, thank, yeah, sure. So first of all, thanks for the invitation. Um, as a principal and as an educator, I, I have to say that um, certainly as an administrator, the part that I've enjoyed the most by far has been the month of May with seniors and senior parents and the celebration that lasts for weeks. Um, there's lots of rewarding aspects, but I, I really think that's, that's the best part. When you're shaking hands of kids who were all-stars the whole time, shaking hands with kids who you got to know really well and they wondered if they're ever gonna make it. Like, it's a really special thing and um, it, I am as heartbroken, or at least close to as heartbroken as anybody else about where we are right now. And I'm still hopeful that we can put together something. Ms. Hacker mentioned, "Hope for the best, plan for the worst." That was literally my motto when I was ASB director. Um, you know, you make your plans and you try to think through what can go well and what ca-, what might not. And um, so I'm all about contingency plans. I love the idea of committing to doing everything we can to doing something live and doing something special and having a plan in case that falls through, some memory, some keepsake, some event that they can take with them. So I do want you to know that myself and my team, we're all for it. Um, it, it's gonna be a lot of logistics. Um, putting together graduation is a year-long endeavor. It takes a whole year and it takes people who've been doing it for years and know the ins and outs of it. So we're, somebody mentioned agile. Um, we're gonna have to be agile with this. It's not going to be um, it's not gonna be an easy thing, but I don't mind challenging, right? Um, so I would love to work with Thomas, work with our stakeholders about the parts of graduation that are non-negotiable, uh, the things that we just have to have. Give you an example, robes. Those are something that I think in terms of that event tend to be non-negotiable. And then we gotta, of course, think through, how in the world are we gonna give it to kids? Give them these robes in a way that's safe. Um, so like, think through the things that are non-negotiable, think through the things that maybe are negotiable that we can try to do. Um, so I'm looking forward to that, uh, and that challenge. And um, I feel fortunate to have um, someone like Mr. Stewart, who's been working with activities for a while. And I know that we have Mr. Wanker in the district office, who's working with a lot of the COVID stuff and also has experience with graduation. We have it, and Mr. Carey, who's done it for years. We have a team who I believe can be agile. Um, but there, there will be definite logistical challenge that we can work through together. Um, you know, hope for the best, plan for the worst. And um, Ms. Marcus said, safety. I mean, I think that ultimately is going to be the wild card, is what can we do safely? And um, I promise you, I'm ready to do whatever I can that does not endanger anybody in our community. So um, there are a lot of variables. Um, and I've actually jotted down a great many of them. But um, I believe we can do what Dr. Breggy suggested and remain agile at the same time. Um, but I also know that it's going to be a challenge and my staff is ready to face that challenge the best we can. And I'll take any specific questions if people have them, because there are a lot.
So what we'll do is, if it's okay, we'll hear from Mr. Allen and uh, Mr. Bugby, I think, is with us as well. And I, I'm, again, I'm not sure if Mrs. Kaber is, but if she is, she can definitely jump in as well. And then we can, if individual board members have questions for anybody from the staff, I think we'll circle back to you in order. Thank you.
So I'd like to, um, first of all, just reiterate exactly what Mr. Mead was saying. And that is that graduation's an important time. It's an opportunity for us to celebrate our kids. And, and there is this really special bonding that happens in that last couple of weeks of school when um, the kids are finishing up their finals and, and it's an opportunity to kind of, as the, we begin rehearsals, we really just, for an entire week, we celebrate kids. I mean, the whole rehearsal season and and it's, it's, it's an amazing opportunity for us to kind of um, celebrate them as individuals um, before they leave us. And so I think that for all of us, um, I, I was just, I was on with a student earlier today, um, with a one-on-one meet. And um, one of the things that we both said is, how crazy this is, that we're ending our year like this. And when we, we really aren't being able to um, have these opportunities for our eighth grade trip and um, for our spring musical and our sports and um, and it is surreal. And the kids have lost a lot this year. Um, so I, I, I wanna acknowledge that. Um, and I do, I reiterate pretty much what, what Mr. Mead was saying, that um, you know, obviously, our first choice, we, we would love to have a graduation ceremony. And that's, that's something that's so special and important to all of us as educators. Um, we, but obviously, it needs to be safe. The administrative team at Beverly Vista Middle School has been meeting, um, we've had several meetings to kind of begin planning some contingency ideas and begin brainstorming some contingency ideas in the event that we are not able to have an actual uh, full-out graduation. Um, but, um, on a formal graduation. And so we have begun discussing um, some ideas just as a team, just informally. It's very, very informal. Um, and then we've also met with the eighth grade graduation committee, which is made up of parents who have spent the entire year putting together all of the events. And, and some of you on this board have actually been chair of those committees. So you know the work that goes into that, that committee. And um, so we've actually started working with them as well, because there's a lot of other things in addition to just the walking, you know, the commencement. We've also got things like yearbooks and a, all of those end of the year kinds of things that need to be kind of closed out um, as part of these celebrations. Um, luckily, our PTA and our um, uh, purchased our cap and gowns this year. So others are purchased, um, and they're owned by the school. And so we actually own ours, they're not rented. Um, so we, we've actually begun thinking about how could we distribute, and I'm not sure we're in that place, but we, to be, begin to put some ideas out there. But we do have some ideas in the event that we cannot have a formal graduation um, for health reasons. We do have some ideas that are kind of um, a little bit, we feel like outside the box, and also provide the families, our eighth grade families to participate. I can't tell you, though, just as a principle of our first year as a middle school, um, the first year in the history of Beverly Hills, it, I'm, I, it makes me so sad that um, it makes me sad that we're kind of ending our year this way. Um, but I'm just gonna say this. I'm so proud of our staff, where we brought together people from four different schools. And they've created a community um, this year that has been, they've, they've, they've created a village. And um, they've really surrounded um, our kids um, over the last few weeks. That village has become really apparent. And I couldn't be more proud of our staff and the way that they've kind of risen to this occasion. So um, we, we are ready for whatever um, comes our way. And, and we will make it happen. And I do believe that agility is gonna be a, a key to making, uh, to making this successful. So that's kind of where we are.
Okay, um, I think Mr. Bugby's next. Thank you, Mr. Allen, for that.
Hi, everyone. First of all, it's great to see everyone's faces. I miss you all. Um, I think I agree with everyone. Safety is the key thing. Safety first. We go with what we're told to go with in terms of social distancing, in terms of stay-at-home orders. We're all hoping they're lifted, but we're gonna have to play that by ear. I do, I wanna point out, everyone on the screen here, everyone in this meeting, I want you all to think back to your eighth grade graduation. I want you to think back, I love that I see the smiles. Think back to your high school graduation and think back to your high school prom, especially your hair. Everyone deserves the right to have that picture to look back on. Because let me tell you, if I could show you my picture, you would be impressed with my hair from my prom picture. Um, on that note, I love Ms. Marcus's idea of having options. I like a Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. I know that Mrs. Kaber and I have been working very closely to make sure that we have similar, yet uniquely special promotions for fifth grade, and we will continue to do just that.
Okay, um, thank you for that. Dr. Breggy, is there anybody else from your staff who wishes to speak at this moment? Oh, Ms. Kaber, there you are. I didn't see you originally, and I was looking for you. Okay, there you are. You must be a number. Okay, great.
Thank you so much for having us, everyone. It's so nice to see everyone. Um, I wanna agree with Mr. Bugby 100%. We sort of put our fifth grade teachers on it already and sort of put it to them and said, they're so creative and um, they know their students so well, to say like, what sort of virtual graduation, uh, sorry, promotion ceremony and experience could we provide? Um, where we're celebrating them and um, celebrating them coming together from two or more communities, um, really being able to get them finishing elementary school and off on their way to um, to middle school. And we want it to be something like special and memorable for them. And at the same time, I do wanna um, say that elementary school is different than middle school and high school. And that if we're talking about um, moving things to the end of the summer, that we're ready to like, be excited for them to go to middle school. And we don't need to be hanging on to that piece. So we wanna make sure that we're focusing on like, the virtual piece of that, so that eighth grade and um, 12, uh, 12th grade can really be that special graduation piece. Um, so we know sort of where we are and where we fit in this bigger picture of everything.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaber. I love that you said, um, that, you know, what you said about fifth grade and middle school and not hanging on to that. I think you're right. I think that those groups are very, fifth grade is very different from middle school graduation and high school graduation. I, I think that's very, that's a valid and true statement. Thank you. Um, okay, so Dr. Breggy, anything else before I turn it over to the board for any questions that they may have um, from staff?
No, I just wanna just reiterate that um, you know, some of this work, the planning work, has to happen, you know, right away. And it's actually really good timing. Um, because the countless hours of everybody that's uh, in this virtual group, I, I can't even uh, begin to, to, to thank everybody for um, you know, this launch of the Home Learning Plan 2.0. It's, it's, you know, we, we've launched that now and it's successful and we have an agreement with our teachers' union. So um, it's actually good timing now that um, we're gonna be having some of these conversations. And I really wanna pull Thomas in and I really wanna connect with Kevin and, and find out what's happening with his school and his parents that are working on, and just provide that type of support. But um, but also that we, you know, But um, but also that we, you know, can't do this alone. It, there are so many logistics when it talks, when you, when you um, are thinking about this type of creativity and innovation. Um, that there is, there's so many logistics that it gets, it gets beyond our very, very small team. But um, but there's ways to get some help. Um, and um, and that's why I would like to meet with the board. Um, uh, even uh, next week or at the end of this week, uh, we can make a decision. Um, just so that you can help us get going in the right direction uh, as we start to plan some, um, some options. Uh, with, with creating something uh, for our, our eighth graders and our um, seniors. And in even perhaps some ideas uh, from our fifth grade promotion.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, Thomas, I'm gonna, Mr. Recupero, I'm going to turn it over to you, please, for any questions or comments.
Uh, I mean, yeah, there was one question. It was just regarding the June 4th date, I think. Um, Mrs. Hacker and I discussed is whether, if that's still, I mean, obviously I don't see that being occurring because of uh, the coronavirus. But I just was wondering what's going on with that date. Is that still, is that postponed or is there going to be a virtual on that day or?
So you're asking because of COVID-19 and the direction that the board and Dr. Breggy has taken as it, as it relates to June 4th. That's the last day of the school year. Is that still a flexible day for something to occur or not to occur? Is that correct? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Breggy, I can, I guess you can answer that question maybe?
I mean, I just want to circle back to um, you know, some, sometimes you have to look at what your parameters are. And um, you know, and like I said, even with logistics. And um, we, we have time, so um, there isn't anybody that's making a recommendation tonight. Um, to, to postpone that date yet. Um, you know, I, I think we do need to come up with a, you know, a Plan A, B, C, D. Um, and, and look at that from uh, from everything, from the amount of um, um, you know, people that can attend. I just think we have to have a variety of things that we can do and we, we do have some time. So um, I, I just don't think that we need to make a decision about even postponing right now. Um, I, I think we need more information. I, I get very worried about not having more information and ideas. And we need to um, do more of what you've been doing, Thomas. And that's um, get some more student voice and student input into what are the possibilities? Um, I just don't want to make, once you make that kind of announcement, um, you know, that's, that's, that's the final uh, announcement. And so um, I just don't think we need to make it right now. I think the plan right now is let's prepare and plan for um, the options for, for June.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Recupero, anything else?
No, I just wanted to say and make it public how everyone here is on board with having a graduation, making sure that everyone has the experience. Um, so I just want to make that public and everyone to know that in the community and just wanted to make that last comment.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Margot.
Thank you. Um, thank you, uh, staff for being here and opining tonight. I do look forward to what uh, the contingency plans would look like. Um, uh, there's a myriad of options I'm sure you will explore. And I think it'll be great to have something for the kids. And I say that only because in looking over some recent articles of today uh, online and trying to find. I, I remember that Governor Newsom had, I think it originally put a May 15th on the stay at home and then, and then it all depends. Um, you know, we would need in order for graduation to be on June 4th, we're going to need time to come back and do it. So I don't know if staff feels that three weeks is enough, if the governor does lift it. But everything I'm reading, it's pretty clear that it says, even if things, the stay at home is lifted, large gatherings are not. Uh, those are not going to happen. Every, all the science is saying until we have herd, herd immunity, there's not going to be an allowance for people to get together in large groups. So we have to pay a very close attention to that over the next four weeks. I think uh, if we don't really have a beat on that by the middle of May, it's going to be very hard to uh, even plan for something over the summer. Being that kids will start going away to college. Um, I, once again, I do want to say that I want there to be a graduation. I do, I have two, an eighth and a 12th grader. If this virus could have hit in a worse year, I mean, really, but here it is. This is, this is, this is, this is our generation's world-changing event. And, and the character of a people, of a race, of a species is how it deals with it. And right now, health has become, and like Mrs. Marcus said, health and safety first. So we, we um, will have, I'm sure that the board will all agree that admin and, and, and Thomas and the ASB and PTAs will all um, batten down the hatches and get ready for a couple of options and work as quickly as can to make sure that, that if there's no way for our students to be able to gather anymore this year before they go off to college, that they will be left with something from their high school that leaves them a good taste. And then what will happen is they will be the most unique class because they're the ones that will not have had a graduation. And they will be part of history, whereas the rest of us have plotted along for decades, having graduation after graduation and tradition after tradition. They're the unique class that gets to break the tradition and do so in a unique way. And hopefully everybody involved can find a way to make that in itself memorable. So um, like they were saying about looking back, Mr. Bugby, about looking back at your, your prom pictures and your high school pictures. Well, this class gets to say, this is how we did it because we adapted to survive. So uh, look forward to, to hearing back from admin real soon. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
Yes, uh, I agree, I agree with what uh, Mr. Margot had to say. Um, and it's, it's been helpful to hear staff and the principals, uh, particularly uh, discussing this. It, it, you know, it seems almost a sure thing. At the end of May or the 4th of June, uh, large crowds will not be permitted. Uh, that's, that's a pretty safe assumption. It would be wonderful if it didn't turn out that way, but it doesn't seem like that. Um, so after listening to what was said, uh, Mr. Allen, um, your kids are not going away to college. Therefore, uh, you could have a Plan A that would be a formal graduation. With kids and families like we always did late in the summer. It, it just, it, it just seems like that. Now, we can't say for sure that late in the summer, uh, we'll be able to have large crowds. But at least, uh, that's a good possibility, a real possibility. So it seems to me that that ought to be one of your plans. That is a conventional graduation late in the summer. Um, as far as the elementary schools, uh, you know, I'm, I'm sure you've been talking about all the various opportunities. It seems to me, uh, with uh, fifth graders uh, going to another school, a, an expanded um, award assembly of some kind to be appropriate. And with all the kids together and all the parents. And again, that could be done, that could be uh, done in the late summer. So uh, those are real possibilities. Um, but high school is another thing. Um, I would hope that it would be possible and maybe, maybe um, be possible to find out what the latest date during the summer that the huge majority of the graduates would be able to attend. Um, and maybe it could be very late in the summer where grad, some graduates who might be out of town could come back for the graduation. So I really, I really hope that late sometime, middle, late summer, that the real thing could be held for the high school graduating seniors. Um, so I'm looking forward to hearing uh, what plans develop from here.
Thank you, Mal. Um, this is Walker Schuman.
Thank you. Um, I agree with, with what's already been said. Um, I will say, you know, I think, I think the reference was me to me having chaired the, the Alrodeo graduation last year. Um, and been on that committee the year before. I am, I'm very cognizant and aware of how much work goes into the planning and execution. Um, and I know that the, the middle school eighth grade graduation committee has been hard at work for months and months and months to come up with all of the plans that they've made thus far. I'm sure every committee has, has done the same. And I would just say that uh, I will rely very heavily on the recommendations and the ingenuity of our PTAs, of our ASB, of our admin and staff to come up with the best solutions for how to make sure that this is a really special event for all of our uh, students who are rising from, from fifth to sixth, eighth to ninth and 12th to college. Um, so I'll just, I'll wait to hear the recommendations um, that everyone comes up with. And I thank everyone for being so focused on trying to make this memorable for our kids.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Marcus. Mrs. Marcus, are you with us?
Let's see here. Uh, now I'm doing it. This thing is very slow. I'm very sorry. Um, just want to tell everybody that I've listened to everybody, uh, though I probably have been having trouble. But uh, everything that's been said is very appropriate and I don't have anything that I could add to what has already been said. Uh, I just feel that, I know that the kids will not feel that it's any consolation that they're going to miss the graduation this year. But I hope that they will feel that, that a sense of gratitude that they have been able to get to this without having anything happen to them. So um, I, I hope that we can accomplish a graduation. I hope that all of them be happy with what we can do. We're not canceling it. So I agree with everything that's been said so far. So I'm just going to sign off.
Okay, so thank you, Mrs. Marcus. I actually do have some questions just for clarification. Um, Dr. Breggy and I think Thomas kind of touched on this slightly. The June 4th and, and Mal did too, the June 4th date right now just kind of seems almost impossible. Um, simply because you need to now make a decision, I think I heard you very clearly, by March, by May 15th, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and we have, and you know, we have recommendations not to go back um, this semester to the school. So, to the schools. And so with that, I, I think that those are conflicting pieces of information that we know we're working with. Um, and so I, I'd like to, I know that you said, you know, information is, is quickly coming um, forward. We're being made aware of different um, scenarios, um, guidelines and, and information. But I guess if, if you had to come back to the board and make a recommendation for postponing graduation, not canceling, just postponing. Um, would it be safe to say, and I think Mal was touching on this again, a July date somewhere or, or the end of June? Depending on the flexibility allowed um, for us to, to, to make this happen from Laco, Department of Education. And um, of course, the governor.
Yeah. Kind of summarized, um, just how I feel about this. I, I think that it's, and I, and we know all of those things and um, you know, and they're working against us. But I, I know that I would feel much more comfortable kind of knowing where we're going before we say that we're not doing something. And so um, kind of, it's been touched upon a little bit, but I think that there's some key information that we need to get. And that, and a, and a key piece of that is, again, how late is too late? And so I, I think it's important to know what that is. So to work with Thomas and ASB to find out like, when that is, I think that that's, I, I think that's really important to do right away. Um, because that, that you, we, we have to kind of begin with the end in mind. And so, you know, to throw a little Steve Covey out there. So it, but if we know what that is, then we can do some backward planning. And I think that that's, that's where we can get creative. Um, I, I agree. I think that it, it, when, when you look at what's happening and um, with social distancing and, and other districts making decisions, it's very confusing. And I don't want to lead people on either. Um, but I, I will say this and, and I'll kind of end with this, is the one thing that I've learned in the last three and a half years of being superintendent here is that uh, no, we don't make easy decisions. Um, I, I, just to cancel, um, like some other school districts have done, that's an easy decision, you know? And we don't make easy decisions here in Beverly Hills and this isn't going to be an easy one. So we're going to put in the time, the effort um, to come up with multiple plans and share that with the board and get input before we make any final decisions. It's, it's, we're just not going to uh, take something off to the table right now.
Mrs. Hacker, you need to unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you so much for that. Um, I was just going to say, thank you, Dr. Breggy, for, for expressing that. Because as, as I was listening to everyone speak, you know, I, I realized that what we're asking in some ways is to push that envelope, you know, all the time, right? Everything that happens here at BHUSD is so difficult. And, and I, I so thank all of, all of you who have worked so hard this last year to have the results that we're having. And, and, and I, I think everyone in the board knows the time that we spend behind closed doors. Sometimes we're on committees or what have you, on emails, texts, whatever. It's, 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 sometimes it can be overwhelming. But I'm going to ask, you know, keep, keep in your heart in mind the students that are graduating and I think you are. And you know, we all have, Mrs. Kaber, you know, I have my son's video from two years ago and you're in it. We've not yet watched it. We haven't watched it because we have the pictures and we have the memories embedded in our, in our, in our hearts and our brain, right? So we, we know what that day felt like because it was very real. It was there, we lived it. And I think every student wants that to be their history, not the history of something that didn't happen to them. But something that we all, you know, those moments that are very far and, far and apart and, you know, that make life so well, so, so worth living and looking forward to. And so I would hope that if we can, and with, if, if it's within our reach, um, having safety, being part of that. Um, following guidelines as set forth by Department of Education, Laco and the governor's office, that we push that envelope a little bit farther and try to go all the way. And um, I think we'll, you know, the students will remember that day. So with, with, with a lot of love and affection and, and that, that is very special. So I, I think I've said my piece. Um, anything else, anybody else? Um, Thomas or anybody, just please jump in before we move on. And I want to thank the principals again for being with us tonight. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on.
I, I would, I would just like to say, um, am I on? Am I going? Uh, I want to say thank you to everybody. The reason I think that we have a chance to be able to pull this off is because of the community support. It's because of the PTSAs and the staff who care. And you know, I really believe that that gives us the agility that not everybody has. Um, I do want to remind everybody that the event is going to be for all adults. There, there won't be, you know, with the exception of siblings, there won't be a single Beverly Hills student at any of these events. They will all be graduated, grown adults. So it is an interesting way to look at this. But the reason we're going to be able to pull it off is because we have such a supportive PTSA. And these kind of community groups or what we can do through the school and the district will do. And what we can't, I genuinely believe we can work with the PTSA and the community to make other events that can happen, happen. So I do believe it can be done. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Okay, and this concludes our discussion. We are moving on. Thank you and good night to those who won't be um, continuing to be part of this meeting. Have a great day. Uh, let's see here.
I'd like to move to Resolution Number 2019, 2020, 023, delegating authority to take necessary action to protect students and staff from the spread of COVID-19 and ratify the closure of schools.
And I will second that. I will second that. I think I heard Mr. Margot um, after, but thank you. Um, okay, any, all those in favor? I'm sorry, let's go for discussion first. Any discussion?
No.
Nope. Okay, so we're going to do this roll call because Pam's on there and it's really difficult to have everybody shout yes or no. So Mr. Spitz. I'm sorry, Mr. Margot, you go first. Yes or no or abstain? Mr. Spitz? Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes. That's five zero. Thank you. Can we please move on the agenda? Noah, can you take the, can you make a motion for the next item?
I'd be happy to. I need to know if anybody is pulling anything from consent.
No.
No.
Nothing from now.
Great, thank you. Then I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that. Okay, I think I heard two ladies, so if it's okay, I'm going to go with Mrs. Marcus, just because we want to share and sprinkle. Okay, any discussion? Oh, we already voted on that. Okay, all those in favor? Noah?
Aye.
Mel?
Yes.
Tristan?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes. That's five zero. Thank you. Next item, please, can I have a motion?
It's superintendent's report.
Oh, you know what? It's difficult for me to go back and forth. I apologize. Dr. Bruggi, floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to see if this works if I change my, I want you to see my screen. If somebody could tell me if you could see that, that would be great.
Because you're presenting.
Yes, we see it.
I don't see that, not yet. Now I do.
Okay. I just want to just go over briefly with you kind of where we're at. I know that there are a lot of expectations out there from a lot of people. There's been a lot of changes as we've talked about. So I just want to briefly talk with you a little bit about kind of state of where we are. There are just so many airplane and flight metaphors that, that, that are coming up with the type of challenges that we have. This is just a great one by Henry Ford. When everything seems to be against you, remember that the airplane takes off against the wind, not with it. And I know that a lot of what we're facing feels like that right now. Some things I just want to talk about is some of the priorities that we've had as a district, our response to what's happening with COVID-19, where we are with the home learning plan, some recent discussions and successes that we've had working together with BHEA, some of the challenges going forward and just a few celebrations. So I'll just go through this really quickly. That if you go back into, it was the end of January when we started to get information about COVID-19, we started to meet, it was very unpredictable at the time. There wasn't a lot of information coming out, but we knew that we needed to prepare our district and we also had to prevent anything from spreading. We also knew that, that our first and foremost job besides safety is providing student instruction. And so we, we knew that we needed to put together a plan. And this is essentially like, felt like we were starting a new company. It was, you know, thinking out of the box and, and putting together a program that, that we've never had to do before. And it was very much like a startup. And while that was going on and news was coming in, it was a priority not only for our students, but also for our employees as well, to make sure that, that they were provided with the safest environment possible. So our response to COVID-19, you know, we had to, we had to lead through a crisis situation, the one that was changing all of the time. We needed to provide updates daily and we had to make sure that we were accurate. And we were getting information from so many different regulatory bodies that if, we had to really decipher which was correct and which one is, do we share, which one do we find out more information about? And so we had to navigate our way through this overload of, of information and resources. So, I'm, sorry about that. Our approach in the very beginning was that, as I mentioned, we didn't have all of the information. So we had some short-term and some long-term goals. And some of the planning that we were doing, we, we couldn't even think about what this would look like if, if it was a worst case scenario. So we, we really focused on that short-term at first, knowing that, that there was going to be a phase-in approach. The timing was immediate. We knew that from what was happening in other countries was kind of coming our way and that we needed to start to get out our information and to educate our community. And it's, it's almost hard to even fathom that our very first communication on COVID-19 went out on January 23rd. And, you know, here we are, April 14th and, you know, we're kind of at the peak. And I just want you to kind of think back, we've, this has been, you know, right after winter break. This has been quite a journey that really began for us that last week of January. So we had some short-term plans. If you remember, we were planning on our spring break and then we were looking at a possible 10-day closure. There was a lot of discussions that were happening in the community about, about being at home and self-quarantining and just being in your home for 10 to 14 days. So our first home learning plan, we knew that we needed to provide students an opportunity to continue their learning, look at what can we provide them to retain the content that's already been taught, provide them with enrichment and do that through technology. And so that was a phase-in and it was also a really good time for people to get kind of settled in. And so we had spring break and then we had 10 days with the initial home learning plan, which received a lot of feedback for us. And it, it, it may be surprising to you that we received feedback both ways. Even that phase-in approach, for some families, they felt like that that was too much. They were scared. There were things that were happening in their families. So it was, it was getting just a barrage of feedback, which we love, but it was all over the place, you know, too much, not enough. And again, our timing was for 10 days. So even before those 10 days were up, we started to put together our Home Learning Plan 2.0 because everything that was coming towards us, we were looking at other countries, what was happening in other countries. So we started to plan our, our 2.0 and we involved our administration, we did involve some teachers and we started to look at, we need to do more now than just retention, enrichment. We had to also be teaching new material. And so the Home Learning Plan 2.0 and the, the richness of this plan really came from the fact that we had to think long-term and provide opportunities for student learning that had new content. I've used this analogy before with the creeping airline flight delay. Some board members had, had mentioned this earlier in our conversations, that we were getting all kinds of dates, May 1st, May 4th, May 15th. And so it kind of feels like we're still in that creeping delay where we're really not sure where it's going to be the end or what's going to happen next. So we've been planning and now we know that we're for sure physically shutting down our building, so the brick and mortar for the rest of the school year. So leading in an unpredictable environment, we know we've all done that and the board has been very supportive of our work. And that has been very gratifying to us to know that, that we're on the right track. And I think that a lot of people were, you know, really unsure of the fact that it's, you know, here we're putting this whole plan together, you know, where are the teachers in this plan? And this is a very unusual situation. You know, when there's a crisis situation, we're expected to put together a plan so that there are not gaps in our student learning. So it happened a little bit differently than our style, which is to work closely and collaborative with our teachers. We, we had to build the plan first and then work into the, working with our unions and coming to collaborative discussions and trying to get each group to look at what's working, what's not working, you know, look at it from a teacher's perspective. One of the toughest things about this plan is that we're a very complex organization. And so while you may have someone that's teaching one area or one grade level, even by content area, the type of delivery of instruction that is expected from a course, is it an elective area? Is it a CTE area? Is it, there's just so many things that, that we knew that one plan, there was no way to build a plan that was a one-size-fits-all. We, we had to create something that, that gave a lot of teacher flexibility. I do want to say thank you to the bargaining unit for BHEA. We had a lot of productive conversations. We had a lot of heart-to-heart discussions about not only what was best for students, but the realization too about what's happening in our own homes. I, I think by now, most of us have been somewhat touched personally by COVID-19, somebody that we know or somebody in our family, but it's caused a, a lot of disruption and, and we had a lot of discussion about what that feels like to be a teacher, be an administrator. We've all turned our, our homes into offices and we, we had a really great opportunity to not only compromise, but, but have a meeting of the minds when it comes to what the long-term plans are going to be. Now, I know that a lot of parents are asking, you know, what, what's next? You know, and it, for us, it's, there are some challenges and there's always going to be some challenges here. We know that in, in one of the discussions that we had with our teachers is that preventative measures, even just communicating with our parents to, to share what changes have happened in our classroom, what type of instruction, what type of support, how are things going to be graded? Because as we continually change the delivery of our instruction and we are continually changing the, the products and the methods in which this is provided, things change in the classroom too, especially how things will be assessed. So we've expected our teachers to provide this information to our parents and it's just good information. Our students and our parents want to know, how am I going to be assessed? How am I able to get ahold of you if I have a question? And those types of logistics and getting that out, those supports, sharing what your structure is and grading is, is, is definitely a priority this week and next week to our parents. And the challenges with this next part is actually the, the beauty of the plan. When the plan was put together for the Learning Plan 2.0, it was really built upon the challenges of, we, we built it around if two teachers were, were living in the same home. How, how could two teachers provide the, the instruction for their students if they're in the same home and sharing some of the same devices or even in the same room? And so that's why there's so much flexibility here, as well as the technical, the technology pieces, as far as students having different access to different pieces of technology, especially in our younger grades, that this is where the flexibility came in as far as how it's delivered, when it's delivered, and really the, the innovative ways in which this can be done. And so while we're going into, you know, another week of our Home Learning Plan 2.0, we're, we're finding that, that more teachers are becoming more creative about what they're doing and they're becoming more comfortable with what they're doing. And it's just, it's been so exciting to hear what some of our teachers are actually doing and how they're connecting with their students. And, and we really want to appreciate that piece of the plan. So many things are happening. Information is coming in quite rapidly and so we're trying to expand a little bit in what we do. We know that our, the feedback that we're getting, sometimes newsletters and narrative information becomes too long and people are not taking the time to read some of the information. And that's why I, I hope that you've seen an improvement, especially over the last eight months or so, where we're doing more with graphics, we're doing more with visual graphics and just signs and in different ways to, to display our messages. We know that video has been very popular. People have responded overwhelmingly that they would rather have video about something that's going on, a, a short video, rather than all of the text and all of the information. And so I think it depends on the person you ask, but, but what we're doing is we've, we've taken the approach that it's a varied approach. It's never, it's not going to be all videos, it's not going to be all written communication. We're also looking at, we have found that what's surpassing Facebook now, I guess, Facebook is now for people that are, are out of the loop, it's Instagram that is, is, we have more people that are signing onto Instagram to get our messages than Facebook. So we're actually looking at, in doing some pretty creative things. I was able to jump on a trial of Mrs. Kaber and Mr. Bugby as they went, they went live and they had a first session just to let parents know that this is something that they're going to do in the future so that they could answer real-time questions. And they actually did it together, which was really great. It shows the strength between the leadership at two of our elementary schools. And so that's more of kind of where we're, we're going in the future. This was, we put out this video. I'm sure you've, if, if you've, you've seen it. I'm just going to play it really quick. I know, I'm trying to talk. Hello, BHUSD? I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you and for the students. And we do want human-to-human interactions. In this time of home learning, it's important to be grateful.
Lock their numbers. If you see a phone number that appears as no caller ID, please answer the phone. It's probably me or one of your teachers trying to get ahold of you.
Okay, so as we look at this, you guys, for tomorrow, with, when we're meeting with the teachers, as we're going to act, oh. I'm sorry. Sorry, guys. Sasha's on my ear. Now over at Hoffman, we can check with their like, oh, yeah. We get it. It's tough. There's a lot of distractions at our home with kids and pets and spouses. We understand that those things are happening. So just a message, you know, it doesn't matter what your title is, it doesn't matter the type of work that you do. Our, our environment has changed overnight and it's a new reality, it's a new normal. But it's really exciting to see that people are showing the human piece of the work that we do. And, you know, and it isn't perfect and it isn't going to be a perfect movie or a background. As you could see tonight with a board meeting, this is really, you know, the first time we've ever done anything like this. And, you know, there's going to be some snags along the way, but this is what everybody wants to do and it's going to get better and better each day. So many creative things. This is just a, a couple of things that are happening, just virtual again with Spirit Week at our elementary schools. It just, it, every time, every day, I'm, people are sharing just new things that we just have never thought of before. Just even at the high school with what does quarantine look like and what an exciting way for students to, and the, the video's a little too long for our meeting tonight, but, you know, to step in some of the homes. And these are all submitted by students. So we're still maintaining social distancing and, and being in quarantine, but we're still able to submit work that we're doing in our homes. And what a great way to see some of our students. I mean, check it out if you can. It's just, it's really endearing to be able to see what, what our students are doing during this time. Just a couple of just quick things that are happening, which are pretty exciting. And this is hats off to Mr. Friend, just this Beverly Vista Middle School, so many celebrations have happened. The Continental Math League has a national competition and in Beverly Vista Middle School, to, to earn a perfect score of 180 is, it, it's unheard of. And so for our school to do that in the first year of being a middle school, not only says a lot about Mr. Friend as a teacher, but also how students are working together. This is a team approach and so amazing things are happening because kids are feeling connected and supported and challenged by their, by their teachers. Other things are happening. There's, there's some awards. This is on our website. We have award winners in the LA- We have award winners in the LA County Science and Engineering Fair and just some great things that are happening outside of our schools as well. We missed World Autism Awareness Day. There were hundreds of us that purchased T-shirts to wear, which is a great recognition of world autism. And unfortunately, we had to wear them at home, but nevertheless, it was a great spirit to do that virtually and to show appreciation and awareness last April 2nd. Huge victories at the high school and this is just another way, as I'm wrapping this up, what, the innovation that's out there, I mean, and this is Coach Franks and you know that our girls soccer team was amazing and CIF champs and, but to have his, you know, his own varsity soccer, his own, you know, they normally have a banquet and they do an award ceremony and, you know, to think like this and have that, you know, as a virtual award ceremony is just absolutely remarkable and this just does not happen. Like the planning that goes into this type of event is huge and so, you know, we just want to keep recognizing our staff that continue to push the bar for innovation and doing what they can to include our kids and keeping them front and center. This was a terrific year for our girls varsity soccer, but really it's a message for all our staff because all our kids want to feel included and they should and also be rewarded and recognized. And so this is just one example of so many that are happening, but this is certainly a coach that did it right. And that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Braggy. We're going to move on to student board member Thomas Recupero.
Awesome, thank you. My update's going to be revolved around home learning. I just want to, I first want to thank the teachers for all their time in creating new types of lessons in the fly and adapting to this new environment. I really do, I mean, everyone really appreciates that. I also wanted to thank the school site and district administration for providing the guidance necessary to move forward with this new plan, so thank you. And lastly, I want to thank the students and parents for being patient and adjusting to this new normal for the rest of the semester. One teacher, I asked his permission before, I can share his name, Mr. Bowers, in particular, spent a ton of time reorganizing his class and grading structure. I just wanted to kind of highlight what he did because I think it's very remarkable. So instead of new quizzes, tests and the, ultimately the final, the students do a bigger project at the end of each unit of the three remaining units for the rest of the semester in online learning. He and Mrs. Chicorello, his co-teacher for physics, they spent a lot of time creating their first end of unit project, mostly over the break time and the Passover days off. So we thank them for all their work. And students have multiple opportunities in live online sessions, offline emails, revising or reviewing their projects before they turn it in. So there's just many ways for students to connect and continue to feel some sense of class structure. And in terms of grades, he reorganized the grading system to create a new category called online projects worth 30%. Because, and then in, back to what the district's doing is we're going to be maintaining the current grading structures. I'm kind of jumping into Mr. Seaman's Ed Service update, but I do hope that other teachers, if not already, if they haven't already, can adopt similar measures, make these changes and adjust their grading practices to adapt to these times. And that's it.
Thank you, Thomas. Thomas, do you want to tell us about your, is there, I have a question for you. Do you want to tell us about your shirt?
Yeah, I committed to Wash U last week, Washington University in St. Louis.
Good job. It's a great school.
I'll be playing football there as well, so.
Wow, very exciting. Good for you.
Thank you.
Good news, good news. Thank you for that report. Congratulations. Okay, we are going to move on to Ed Services, Dustin.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am too going to present my screen. I'm sorry. So you guys do disappear when we present, but welcome to the Ed Services Department Updates. What I wanted to do during this time is just share some really great information with you. The things that I hope to tackle is obviously the review of the SAT and PSAT 10 scores. I want to highlight a upcoming opportunity that we have a opportunity to partnership with Stanford University and just kind of update on the grading practices, which Thomas had just touched on. First and foremost, let me jump into the PSAT SAT. So we did test on March 4th, so we were very fortunate, unlike a lot of our surrounding districts who chose the April test date, we tested in March and so we were able to complete and receive our scores back prior to the physical buildings closing. You'll see on the top, you'll see the PSAT 10, that is our current sophomore students. You'll see that in the evidence-based reading and writing, 85% met or exceeded benchmarks and 62% in our math, which is very aligned with how we perform typically within our CAS. You'll also see on the SAT, which is our current juniors as well, similar scores around that 84% within the English portion and then 62% again in the math. I'm going to jump to, because what I think is important about this is because the board took a leap of faith with us in Cabinet a year ago when we started to purchase the SAT and PSAT suites for us to be able to utilize this data for comparison. And so one of the first things that we always ask is, well, how did we do last year? So here's a great slide of the PSAT 10 taken in March of 2019 compared to this current sophomore class. However, you will see an increase in both the English portion and the math portion and an overall score increase. However, what I don't like to do is compare one class against another because you're really looking at the apples versus the oranges. When you actually look, how did they progress and why are we doing this? Can you not see my screen? Sorry. Let me reshare. It's saying I have an error for some reason. Let me try again.
I don't see a screen at all.
I'm trying to pull it back up. Are you able to see now?
Yes, it's coming on now.
Yeah, we can see it.
So here's the, here's the most important slide. Out of this whole presentation, this is what I hope we walk away with. So the PSAT taken last year in March of 2019, those are the current juniors. They scored 82% in ELA and 60% in math. What we wanted to do was be able to prove that we can move those current sophomores by the time they became juniors in the SAT. Now we are comparing apples to apples and you will see that we did increase not only the percentage that met and exceeded in English, also in math, and increased the overall score. So if we walk away from anything today, this is the best bit of news that you could walk away with. So I'm going to jump into the SAT again. This is kind of an apple and an orange comparison. When you look at the previous, which is our current senior class, which is Thomas's, versus our current junior class, we have increased their test scores comparatively in English, but we did drop in math in seven points less in the overall score. However, we had more juniors this year test than last year, than this year's seniors. So the population that actually is included into these overall scores is much higher. This is a much smaller testing. Again, I'm going to refer back to the actual growth within the same class and that's what we always want to continue to focus on. When you actually look again from a growth standpoint, when we look at, when we administered the PSAT in SQT in October, our students on that, which is our current juniors, scored 80% in the English and 52% in the math. By the time they sat for the spring test, so this was October, this was in March, we increased by 4% in English and 10% in math. This is what we want to pay attention to. Is the work that our current teachers doing benefiting those students within that same grade band? And the answer is correct. Here's the data to support it. Here is another great piece of information is we always want to also look at not only our state, but nationally, how are we ranking and how are we doing? So if you look at our school and then our district, they're duplicate scores because we only have one high school. But if you look at our total score compared to not only the state on March 4th, but nationwide, we are scoring anywhere between about 200 to 230 points higher than the state average and the national average. In addition, in English, you'll see the difference and in math, you'll also see the difference. Close to 100 points higher in both English and math. I'm going to jump right into, so that will sum up my PSAT SAT conversation, but I'd like to also jump into one of the things that we have been working on. Us as Cabinet members and some of our Board of Education members had the opportunity to attend the California School Board Association Meeting in San Diego. It was just this past, I think it was in December. During that time, I was able to meet a professor from Stanford University and engage them in conversation around the National Board Certification for Teachers Process. Over about three months' time, Cabinet, building administration, some teacher leads, even the union have had conversations around being able to possibly support a cohort here with Stanford trusting us to be able to help support and deliver the curriculum and professional development to be able to expand our teaching population, to be able to get teachers certified as National Board teachers. It is not an easy task. I'm going to exit this screen for a second and I'm going to show you the overall handout that was attached. You will see that teachers have to walk through numerous components to become National Board certified. It's not just a simple one-year-long opportunity for them to provide and reflect. We are not only diving into their individual content knowledge, once they pass component one, then they have to jump into component two, which is around differentiation and instruction. They not only have to learn about it through Stanford University's guidelines, regulations, they have to demonstrate it by providing video of their instruction to our students. In addition, then we move on to teaching practice and learning environment. And then last but not least, the effective and reflective practitioner. This is their kept stone at the end of the process. It is a three-year sequence with four components that would be supported directly by myself in Ed Services and then by creating small cohorts across the district. Right now, we have 46 teachers across the district that are interested in participating in the cohort. We would have a cohort of special education students, our teachers, elementary teachers, middle school teachers and high school teachers. The special education teachers have different components within their qualification for National Board certification. I will be supporting all four of those cohorts throughout the process. Last but not least, there has been some questions and concerns and wanting to just kind of hear it. Through grading for quarter four, we are continuing to follow our Board Policy 5121. There has been guidance and again, like Dr. Braggy had updated in Superintendency Update around how information just continually changes. So not only do we receive some sort of guidance on April 2nd from the governor around UC, CSU and CDE, since even that, they released that information, that information has actually been changed. So if you actually go to this current link, you will see that the pass fail that was recommended on April 2nd has now dropped down to option five from the governor and from the California Department of Education and grading has now jumped to number one. And so it is good that we aren't one of the districts that did jump at automatically clinging to the pass fail system just because the UCs had stated they would receive it. We surveyed all the post-secondary options that our students have explored. Casey Riley and I reached out to our professional networks to get feedback from and we received a lot of post-secondary options still requesting a letter grade. And so we did make the right decision in continuing following our current Board Policy 5121 instead of jumping on a bandwagon that now school districts are trying to pull back from. Like Thomas had stated, a lot of our teachers have already started to articulate to our students the change in the grading practices to reflect the home learning process. We will, and all teachers are required by the April 17th, you'll see at the end, a deadline to make sure that their grading practices are clear and understandable to our students and that this is a partnership with our students and our parents and that they have clear expectations of, you know, what is left of the school year. And so I want to thank you guys again for giving me the opportunity to share the great information on the PSAT and the growth between the PSAT to the SAT this year and also even the growth from the PSAT in QST to the SAT. So I thank you again and I am done.
Thank you, Dustin. Thank you, Dustin. Any questions from the board, Mr. Recupero?
No questions. Thank you so much for the update.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you. Dustin, I appreciate the update. It's, what's nice to see is a few years ago when we decided to start rolling out a PSAT for all and SAT for all, that it's slowly having a positive effect. And maybe not slowly, maybe it's actually coming in the two to three years is when we look at something of this magnitude to really get a gauge on it. So I appreciate you circling back to us, you know, we always want to make sure our investments are paying off in the vernacular. The other thing I was going to say is about the National Board Certified. When I was, when I was teaching, there was a third grade teacher in my school, Hancock Park Elementary, who, that got her National Board Certification. She was a stellar, stellar, stellar teacher and what, I would support anything that we can invite as many of our teachers to do this as possible. This is like having Tom Brady all over your bench, you know, for your team. And it would be a great thing for our district to promote and to perhaps make a goal of having the highest ratio of National Board Certified teachers than any other school district. Obviously, larger school districts will have more, but if we can get our ratio up, I think that would be a great goal for us to have in this department. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I'm done.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes, Mr. Seaman, thank you for the presentation. Would it be possible for you to get a hard copy of that presentation into my inbox?
Absolutely.
Or mail it to him. Okay, Mr. Spitz, anything else?
Mr. Spitz?
It takes a little time for this to, no, that's it. I was, I was impressed by the presentation. I want a copy of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Tristan, yes, Walker Schuman, sorry.
Thank you, Dustin. This was a great presentation and it actually, it's interesting because I feel like this COVID-19 distance learning situation is actually a great on-ramp for teachers for this National Board Certification because so much of it is the on, the video and the recording of the lessons and things like that. So it actually seems like a very natural segue and I'm happy that the two meet at this point. But I'm really pleased to see the movement amongst all of the grade levels from the PSAT to the SAT. I want to thank the administration, the Cabinet and staff for supporting adding the SA portion and for going with the earlier date. I think that was tremendous foresight. So give you props for that and yeah, thank you for the update.
Mrs. Marcus?
Thank you very much, Dustin, for that.
Thank you very much, Dustin, for that very fine presentation. I would like to make just a few little comments if I could. I know that we are sometimes criticized that our scores are not as high as they should be, especially in the area of math. But when you look and you compare our scores to those of the state and the national, it doesn't look, you know, we really are head and heels above them. And I don't think that we really should take a backseat to the fact that people complain about them, as I probably once did. They are very strong by comparison. Could they be higher? Yes, of course. And maybe with the advent of the new teaching with the certified teachers and so on and getting people in that thing, we may be able to get them even higher. But I really feel that they were pretty strong comparing them to the state and national. I also would like to thank you for being able now with the ability to compare the scores of kids who are juniors this year with how they did last year as sophomores. This is where you really have the chance to see how our education is improving and how the teachers are, how they're doing. And that's something that new system that you installed makes it possible to do, and I think that's great. So I think that I asked you a question earlier when I saw this on the agenda. Do we have any teachers right now that are? And I was surprised to find out that you said that we have two teachers that are board certified at this time. And I think that's, I was amazed to hear that. And I like the way you've planned out where we can support them to getting that certification in one way or another. So I'm very supportive of using that plan, whatever one the teacher would opt for if they have a choice, but to get more teachers on to that program. It's really going to make a difference. Thank you.
Dustin, thank you. I'm sorry, thank you, Mrs. Marcus. And Dustin, I just want to say, thank you for bringing this opportunity to our district and our teachers. I think that it will really make a difference in the positive direction that we are trying to continue to follow. So thank you so much. I think it'll make an incredible difference. I also was very impressed, you know, often in the past when we obtain information about where our graduates go to, it's a list of a lot of schools with a lot of checkmarks. And some of those are duplicates. You know, we count students more than once and it's great news to celebrate and to see where these students are getting admitted to. But it's very difficult for us to really say, here's how many students went to the UCs. And then in just reviewing the report today, I was very pleased to see that very distinctly come out in your report. And I think it would be so incredibly helpful to tell the board more about the numbers rather than just a map of where all of our students got admitted to because that's not really telling us a story. But you were able to so distinctly just say, hey, you know, here's how many students we had who actually went to four-year universities. Here's how many went to the UCs. And one can conclude where the rest went. And so we can get information as to the CSUs and the privates. That would really complete the information. I know that we've asked for that in the past. So I'm really pleased to see that you've started to map that out for the board. Thank you, because I know that's a lot of work. I think that concludes. Do you have anything else, Dustin, that you want to say or jump in?
Just, I wanted to make two comments. And one is, we hope to extend the PSAT to the ninth grade as well. There's a PSAT 9 to complete the whole suite so that something that you'll hear me come around and ask as well down the road, that would allow then us to be able to see growth ninth, 10th, and 11th grade years. And that'll be a great data point. In addition, Mrs. Marcus, I do agree that we do get browbeat quite oftenly around our math scores, yet we do perform very high compared to state and nationally. And yes, there can definitely be an increase. And it's part of that strategic plan is you'll definitely see a thread of math being mentioned when we get around to completing the strategic plan for the district. And it's definitely, you know, our number one priority right now in Ed Services. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dustin. We are going to move on, if I may, just a little bit before you make that motion. I have to open it up to public hearing and approval before we go into discussion of the school fees. So at this moment, I'd like to open it up for public hearing. I believe there has not been any comments at this time from the public in regards to this issue. So I am now going to close that public hearing. And now, Mrs. Walker Schuman, you can make your motion, please.
I move a approval of all facility justification report and resolution number 2019, 2020, 019.
And I will second that. My understanding is that Scott Gald from California Financial Services will lead the discussion. So I just wanted to announce that. So he's ready. And can we have an approval of the motion made? All those in favor, Mr. Margot?
Are we voting on A or B?
We are actually going to hear from Mr... I'm sorry, I'm going to take that motion back. I'm going to take that order back. Mr. Gald, is he with us, Dr. Braggie, at this point?
Yes, he's here.
Okay, he has a, he's going to lead the discussion on this report. We are on B. Mr. Margot?
Yeah, we didn't vote on A. There's an approval. There's a public hearing and approval. A, are we skipping that item or are we coming back?
I just opened it up and then I closed it for, we didn't have any public hearing? It was just a public...
The transmitter also says approval. It's a public hearing and approval.
So the approval of Mr. Wade, I believe that that's item B, correct?
Yes. Trustees, the item A is the opening of the public hearing and the closing of the public hearing. And the actual approval of the report and the resolution is item B.
Right. So can, so we are, we need, we had a motion. Tristan, did you motion that? I thought that's two motioned.
I did. I motioned from 8B.
So we are going to approve that motion so that we can move into discussion. But I believe before we do that, Mr. Gald, is Mr. Gald with us? If he can lead us?
He is on the line. I'm not sure if he's able to unmute himself.
Okay, so I would say, Noah, he would have to present first before we approve it, correct?
Yeah, go ahead with the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, so when Mr. Gald is ready, Dr. Braggie, you can signal that to us.
I may need to get him on the phone and do the superintendent way of doing this. So hold on for one second. Trustees, I have Mr. Gald on my phone. So he's going to speak. That works.
Yes, that'll work. Okay, Mr. Gald, you're on.
Okay. Well, good evening, board and superintendent and cabinet. My name is Stephen Gald. I'm with California Financial Services. And we were hired by the school district to put together the required justification for the collection of Level 1 developer fees by the district. What I'll do is I'll give you just a quick summary of what we're at, what the board's considering this evening, and then open questions that you may have. Education Code 17620 allows public school districts throughout the state of California to impose a developer fee on new residential development as well as commercial and industrial square footage that is built within their boundaries. The purpose of the fee is to provide funds to the district to mitigate the impact of this additional development. The impact of the additional development can be felt in a number of different ways. In some cases, school districts are required or have the need to actually build additional capacity or build the number of seats within their facilities. In other instances, which is the instance that Beverly Hills finds himself in, is as existing facilities continue to age, this money is available and purpose help add to the other funds available to renovate or reconstruct aging facilities, all with the intent of maintaining a level of capacity at the district level to house students from new development. What you have in front of you is a form of the required justification study. The law requires that a school district provide a, prepare a study that identifies the purpose of the fee to be collected, the amount, and justifies the connection between the collection of those fees and the impact the individual units have on the, on the school district. The way that the Level 1 fee works is each, every other year, in the even number of years, the state allocation board sets forth a maximum Level 1 fee, both on a per residential square foot basis and a per commercial industrial square foot basis. And as we justify the fee for school districts statewide, that becomes the maximum amount of fee you can impose to the extent that you can justify that level of impact or greater. In Beverly Hills Unified School District's case, the maximum Level 1 fee that can be collected for residential development is $4.08 per square foot. And you will find that on page, on page 11 of, page 11 of the study that's attached to your agenda, the district justifies a total school facilities cost of $4.21. And as a result, through the approval of this report, the district will be able to levy the $4.08 maximum state fee. This fee is levied on residential development, new residential development, as well as residential additions over 500 square feet, and will be collected during the permitting process that someone goes through at the city. For commercial industrial, the commercial industrial charge, the state took action at the same meeting that they took action to increase the residential fee, to increase the maximum fee for a unified district to 66 cents per square foot. We are required by law to justify the developer impact fee for commercial square foot on separate categories of commercial industrial, including retail services, retail and services, office, research and development, industrial warehouse, manufacturing, hospital, and hotel motel. And you'll see on page 21 of the report attached to your agenda that the district was able to justify impact in excess of the 66 cents for office, research and development, industrial warehouse, manufacturing, and hospital, while we were only able to justify 60 cents per square foot for retail and services and 31 cents per square foot on hotel motel. The thing that separates each one of these commercial industrial categories is the number of employees that the average square foot of this type of development would have. So as you can see, when you look at this as a good example, hotel and motel could be quite large per square foot and have just a handful of folks working there. Somebody at the front desk, maybe a bellman, and the housekeeper, those types of things. Whereas an office generally, office space is generally fairly densely populated with employees. So that's kind of just the quick bottom line. If the district approved the report today, there is a 60-day period until the fees can be levied. And then at that time, each person developing both residential and/or commercial square foot within the district would pay a fee to the district in line with the amounts listed here. So were there any questions?
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Gald. I'm going to circle to Mr. Margot. And then we'll go to Mr. Spitz.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Wade, what is the current state of affairs with the developer fees in the city? Because I didn't really see anything in the report about, you know, it was more on a higher level, higher altitude. But in our own city, what are we dealing with with the city? And how does this affect that relationship?
So the city collects the developer fees on behalf of the district. Because they act as our administrator, they actually take a 3% fee off the top. So for example, if we collect $100, the city would take the first $3 from the top. And that's approved by statute. And I believe that they have been our administrator of developer fees for a long period of time. But during this study, I know Mr. Gald was in touch with the city of Beverly Hills to get certain information. And they are aware of the statutory requirements.
Okay, Wade, I was also, I'm wondering, are we in good standing with the city or are they in good standing with us regarding current developer fees? Have we checked on that?
Yes, as far as remittance to the district, yes. They are current in remitting the fees.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hacker.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes, I was very interested in the report and glad to see the results of it. I think this is significant for us because anybody that drives around the streets in Beverly Hills sees that there are a significant number of single-family residences, residents with the old house with maybe as small as 3,000 square feet being torn down and in its place, a home of 8,000, 10,000 and more, larger square feet are going in. And as the report indicates, the difference in square footage is charged. And that's going to be significant. Another significant area in the city is we're going to see a lot of mixed-use development going up. And that mixed use includes residential. So this is significant for the district. And it's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz, Mrs. Schuman, Walker. Walker Schuman.
Mr. Gald, thank you for the thorough and clear presentation of the report. This is good news at a time when we like to have some good news. So I just, I thank you for your time. I thank you for putting it together and presenting it so clearly.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus?
Just a second. Okay, I'm on. I have a couple of questions. Mr. Gald, thank you so much. It was a very clear, I went through the book that was provided on the agenda and read most of it. I had some questions about it. I think they answered them. One of the things that bothers me about the report, and I don't know whether that would be taken into effect, but as you were, that the governor of the state issued an order on Beverly Hills that they must have, I believe it is over 7,000 new units that be built. And I'm not sure of the timeframe on them, but that would all have been taken into consideration when this report was done. Because that just came out not too long ago. But the city has been now required to add these 7,000-plus units for residential. So that would be my first question. Do you heard anything about that?
So that recent development was not included within the analysis. I'll go back and look at it, but I'm assuming it's likely because just the timing of it. I will tell you this, that the state does set the maximum fee we can justify. And currently, the information or the number, the unit counts that were provided through the city that were put into this report, it does allow us to justify that maximum amount. As we move forward over the next year or two years, the district will have the opportunity to the extent something significantly changes on the ground that would change the way that fee is collected, to re-justify in 2022 as the state increases the fee again. to re-justify in 2022 as the state increases the fee again. So no, the information's not in there. But however, since we're justifying the maximum fee as is, we would not have the opportunity, even if we added it in, to increase the fee over what you're currently justifying to collect, which is the $4.08 per square foot for residential development.
Okay, does that $4.08 per square foot indicate a larger, you said that used to be 3%, we're now looking at a bigger developer fee for this, for our district as a result of that change? Do you anticipate, when with the construction and everything, it should give us more money, right?
Yeah, correct, you are correct. Because the developer fee is a per-square-foot fee, to the extent that there were, there was additional development in the city of Beverly Hills that would, as a result, increase the amount of actual collections the district would have.
Last question, when will be the $4.08 and the other 66 cents or whatever, when would that start to take effect?
So by statute, we have, we will be providing the information to the city. And that will take, will go into effect 60 days from your approval.
Thank you very much, it was a very clear presentation.
Mrs. Marcus, just to answer one of your questions, that state senate bill SB 50 actually failed. So until it comes back for approval, we are not, Beverly Hills is not required to build the additional, I think, 8,000 units you were referencing.
No, but I think that there is, I do think Tristan, so yes, that one failed, but there is something in the master plan that was captured where we, the city has to build or redesign certain units, if you will, from the city to be not affordable, yeah, I guess affordable. And I remember Mr. Ostroff giving a presentation at the PTA council meeting, I think in January, I want to say, where there's two, there's two, there's two things going on. One is the law, and then there's one that you just clarified didn't pass. But I think the one that Mrs. Marcus was referencing was the law. But that, that is something that is in progress and that the city has to identify for the state of California. But I think it doesn't matter. I think that this, for purposes of the district and for the developer fees we're looking to collect, by doing this, we're maximizing, maximizing our opportunity to, to, to claim those developer fees in a greater way than, than we were. And just to clarify for the board, and I think Mr. Margot and Mr. Spitz can be part of this, we gave direction, I believe, what, a few years ago, to, to recalculate the, how we were collecting our developer fees. And I think this is the product of that, of that direction. Is that correct, Mr. Roach?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would agree.
So, so good work, and we finally are seeing the fruit of that direction. I think it was like 18 months ago, or maybe two years ago. I can't even remember. Mr. Roach, do you have that information?
It was prior to Mr. Roach.
Yes, it was. But thank you, Mr. Roach, for making it happen, and Mr. Gold for the information. Mr. Roach, anything else?
Uh, no, I'm just looking for, for a motion of this resolution.
So I think we have a motion, and we had a sec. So I am gonna go around and ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes as well. That's 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move approval of a professional services agreement with Moss Adams LLP for Proposition 39, Measure E and Measure BH Performance Audits.
I'll second.
Okay, so Mrs. Walker Schuman and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Any discussion? Any questions? No? Mr. Margot, Mr. Spitz? It's Walker Schuman saying no, Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Margot, you have, you have an item to discuss? You have an issue, please?
No, I thought, sorry, I thought we were voting.
Oh, okay, now we're voting. I just asked if there was any issues. Okay, Mr. Margot, that's a yes, Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I am a yes, that passes 5-0, thank you for that.
Would you like to make a motion on the next one?
Please do so, help yourself, yes.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2019-20-020, Resolution of the Board of Education of the Beverly Hills Unified School District declaring specified construction activity an essential function of the district.
I'll second that.
I second.
I seconded, I'm sorry, no. Let's see here, any discussion? No discussion? Okay, Mr. Margot, is that a yes or a no, or abstention, please?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, that's 5-0, thank you for that. May I please have a motion for the next item?
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of Resolution 2019-2020-021, Emergency Resolution for Abandonment of Oil Wells.
I will second that. I will second that. Okay, we are going to move on with a discussion, any discussion? Board members? Okay, Mr. Margot, how do you vote on, let's take a vote now, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus? Mrs. Marcus, you need to unmute yourself.
Yes.
Thank you. That's 5-0, I'm sorry, yes, my vote is a yes as well, 5-0. Okay, moving on, please.
I move adoption of Resolution Number 2019-2020-022, Urgency Resolution to Upgrade, Repair, and Abate Areas Prior to the Start of the 2021 School Year.
So moved. Any discussion?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spitz. I'll just move on, Mr., Mr., any discussion, please, again? Mr. Margot? How would you like to vote on that, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Thank you, and my vote is a yes as well. That's 5-0. Moving the, moving forward, can I have a motion?
I will move on the next one. I move to ratify the professional services agreement with MTH2 Engineering Incorporated to provide land surveying and utility radar scanning services at Beverly Vista Middle School and Horace Mann Elementary School.
Okay. Do I have, thank you. Any discussion? Raise your hand, no? Okay, we are going to go for a vote now, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And my vote will be a yes as well, that'll be a 5-0. Next item, are we on E? I believe we are. Yes, okay, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Lain Consulting for a deal technical investigation report and design recommendations for the Beverly Hills High School new southwestern baseball fields, aquatic center, and retaining wall projects. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion on this issue? Okay, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wa, Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that, we're moving along to item F.
I will move purchase shade structures for Horace Mann School from David Bang Associates Incorporated of California by utilizing the Colton Joint Unified School District Piggyback Bed Number 18-02 Playground Equipment and DSA Shade Shelters.
Mr. Margot, did you want to make a second for that?
I will be happy to, I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Okay, any discussion on this? I don't, no, okay, great.
I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say, it's great that we are moving forward with these shade projects at BV and Horace Mann. There'd be nice to get these done before the next school year.
Yes, I think it's wonderful progress, thank you for reminding us of that. Thank you. Okay, so we are going to go for a vote now, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And my vote is a yes as well, thank you.
I will move approval of a pool of commissioning services, service firms for various projects.
I'll second that. Okay, discussion, any discussion, please? No, no discussion? Mr. Margot?
Wait, wait, sorry. Support top firms, are these all going to be doing different projects? It says service firms for various projects. Do we know, is there which project or anything like that? Or there's no, there's no fees here either? I mean, we don't see any amount of money. So I mean, I'm, are we approving just to seek out the firms? Or are we approving the finished products? That's, I'm curious about that.
Lee, we're asking for qualifications, correct? For the proposal piece of this?
We're approving of just a pool of service firms. There's no finished product.
Okay. Just to be clear.
That's a great question, thank you for clarifying that, Mrs. Marcus. Okay, so any other discussion before we go for a vote? Okay, Mr. Marg, Mr. Margot?
Aye.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And my vote is a yes as well, that's 5-0. May I have a motion for the next item, please?
I'll move approval of Amendment Number 30 to the agreement with DLR Group for Architectural and Engineering Services in the Modernization of Beverly Hills High School Buildings B3 and B4.
I will second that, thank you, Mr. Spitz. Okay, any discussion on this?
Uh, yes. I, I am not pleased about this one. And I, I was wondering if it would be possible, I don't know, is Mr. Pileman, has he joined us, Dr. Bregge?
So I was gonna differ, I was gonna ask you about this, Mr. Margot, because I don't see Mr. Pileman with us. And I thought maybe you had some information for us since you guys are on this committees committee?
No, we didn't.
I'm present.
Okay.
Oh, hi Jeff, yeah, so I understand that this is a true-up with DLR for Buildings B3 and B4.
Correct.
I understand the reasons for a true-up. What I'm not thrilled about is the final price this was negotiated at. And I'm wondering if there is anything else that can be done regarding this amendment number and its total cost?
The amendment is based on the contractual terms with DLR, which is based on OPSC sliding scale of the cost of construction of work done. So the exhibits with the amendment outline that the cost of B3, B4 is not the only item being used to calculate the sliding scale. But what DLR has agreed to do with us is use all of the projects on the Beverly Hills High School campus, B1, B2, B3, B4, the future work of Building C and the site work to put that amount of construction cost into the OPSC sliding scale, which reduces the average percent fee that's associated against the construction cost. So right now, we're running at an 8.18%. If we just use B3, B4 alone and put that into the sliding scale formula, that would yield something closer to nine or possibly just in excess of nine. So they have agreed to, to bundle the cost and utilize the OPSC scale and the district's advantage as opposed to their advantage. So that is one negotiation that has been done. The other issuances of miscellaneous change orders and other items that we've experienced on the project, we've been successful in negotiating those to go away and not bring, I don't want to use the word nickel and dime because it sounds not very professional, but we're not interested in entertaining those sorts of small charges for what would be in a strict contract interpretation considered extra services for an architect. We're holding that line as well all the way through that project with emphasis. So those are the discussions that are going on behind the scenes. And we will continue to take that stance all the way through the master plan build-out of the Beverly Hills High School.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Then my follow-up, just to confirm, and I do appreciate the amount of work that you and the team does in negotiating these things out on behalf of the board. So am I to understand that there will be no more true-ups for the Beverly Hills High School property? This encompasses the site work and Building C? Is that correct?
No, 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 this is just for the B3, B4.
Okay, because you said something about the rest of the.
Right, the larger denominator you put into the OPSC scale, the larger the project bundle or total yields a lower percent. So if we, so if we were just to put the value only of B3, B4 into the OPSC schedule as a denominator in the formula calculation, it would yield a higher percent. We've convinced DLR that we, we need and we deserve the economy of scale that if you bundled all projects to create the denominator, then that lower percentage rate is applied to each one of our projects, both current and future, to gain the most advantage out of, out of the formula.
Do you, do you, knowing that the, the scope of work that is continuing for B3 and B4, do you find this true-up to be, I guess, the lack of a better word, true to form? Or is it, I mean, I know we've had issues with the contract language, so that, that doesn't help us in this realm. Is this, is this acceptable? And does it fit within our soft costs on the project budget?
Yes, and yes. And it is an industry norm to have a cost of construction sliding scale agreement with your design professionals. It's, it's not uncommon. An 8.18% cost of construction is, is a rate that is not, is not to feel like we're being taken advantage. It's market or less than market based on the volume and how we're calculating the fee.
Oh, all right, thank you, Jeff, that, that really does help. I appreciate it, I'm done, thank you, Mrs. Hacker.
Anybody else? Mrs. Marcus, do you have something to say? I think I hear you, I mean, I see you. You have to unmute yourself.
I keep forgetting, I gotta. Mr. Spitz and Mr., I mean, and Mr. Tristan Walker, go ahead and move.
Oh, I just was asking if anybody else had, had any comments? And so I, I thought I saw you speaking, but I, I see Mr. Spitz saying no. Mrs. Walker Schuman, do you have anything to add or say or questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus?
I do have a question. Okay, so I've said, I have not been really into the, the construction as much as some of the other members of the board. So what you're saying is the original guaranteed price to build Building B3 for was $71,647, approximately dollars? Is that, am I understanding that right?
The GMP Number 2 that was approved in the second board meeting of January 2020 represented that $71,000, $71 million. represented that seventy one thousand, seventy one million dollar number. Now that that construction cost has been established, then the true up of the design agreement based on those market-driven construction costs is what we're processing here today. So.
Well, it looks. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, it looks like it went down sixty four and a half million, sixty four million, almost five hundred thousand dollars, it says.
In the GMP two of seventy one million dollars, when we dissected that against the contract, we only allowed DLR to put their eight point one eight multiplier on the sixty four million dollar amount. So we kind of, we're kind of dissecting the contract as much as we can in the negotiations to say, it's not just carte blanche. You can't charge eight point one eight percent on the full value. There are some things that get excluded out of the construction value before we apply the true up percentage using an interpretation of your contract. Those negotiations were in favor of the district, if that makes sense.
So, but this is all going to cost us one million, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars then, right?
Correct.
That's a lot of money.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, I have a question for you, Jeff, and I'm glad you're with us. So just that last sentence on the, on the transmittal where it says, "The proposal also includes work for the fire sprinkler design for the fee of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars." That's my first question right there. And then the last sentence, a final, the fees will be reconciled and will be presented at some point in the future to the board for B3 and B4. So my question on the sprinkler design, wasn't that a foreseeable design phase of the project initially? Or was that, was that like a mistake? Did we not, did, how did that get missed? Or is this the right phase to include this sprinkler design?
So kind of going off of my comment a moment ago about the seventy one million dollar gross number, but DLR can only apply the eight point one eight percent to the sixty four million, five, four fifty eight number net-net as an interpretation of the contract. Also in this contract, as DLR reminds us and points out, that is for, that's for basic design services in a standard OPSC contract language, what we have. There are other services that the architect has been asked to perform that aren't categorized in basic design services. Two of those things that come to mind right off the plate are fire sprinkler design systems and kitchen equipment or kitchen design type of work. Those are considered extra services. So first, we calculate the fee for basic design services using the scale multiplier and then add on to that design services that are excluded from the fee calculation. There was, there was a discount in the development of that hundred and fifty thousand dollar number that's included in the backup and the credit in excess of a hundred thousand dollars was provided by DLR against that fire sprinkler design line item. There's a history as to why fire sprinkler design is not considered a basic design service. I don't really feel the need to get too deep into that tonight. But up until about four years ago, five years ago, fire sprinklers were considered a deferred approval item that was not under the architect's realm. They pushed that on to the contractor. The state has since passed regulation requiring that the fire sprinkler be designed by the professional, the architect and his team of engineers, and not a deferred design item that gets pushed into the construction phase. So we studied the fire sprinkler design ad pretty closely. And in previous true ups for El Rodeo and the Beverly Hills High School, you'll see that fire sprinkler item as broken out separately.
Okay. And then finally, did you, did you, can you tell me more or less when the board will be presented with the final cost for Buildings A and B? Because it leads me to believe that that number hasn't yet been identified and that you're coming back to inform us of that number in the near future. Is that correct?
It is. It is our intent to bring before the board at the April twenty eighth meeting the next round of bidding, which we're terming GMP three for B3, B4. The final piece, which is the perimeter site work and utility tie-ins, is still, is a separate package at DSA right now. We're shooting for DSA stamp out on that in the next three weeks. Our contractor, Pro West, will bid out that perimeter site work and we hope to bring that final number, which is going to be GMP four. There's four of them to total up to the total GMP by the end of July or first board meeting in August. That fourth site work package is not a large package, but it needs to be DSA approved before we can bid it out.
Okay.
I have another question. Can I ask this question?
Please. Yes, please.
With all that you've been saying just now, Mr. Pileman, are we within the budget of what we originally thought that this building three and four was going to cost us?
The short answer is yes. I believe Mr. Blake made a presentation at that second board meeting in July covering the hard costs and soft costs and expected final construction value of Buildings B3 and B4.
And next question, if we should not pass this tonight, what kind of delay? Is that delay a hindrance? I mean, what would that cause as far as a delay in moving forward?
As a part of this contract and this true up, both DLR and our other architect at El Rodeo are providing enhanced construction administrative services. And that involves a, not because of COVID nineteen over the past four weeks, but an individual who's fully dedicated to our project four days a week. He does not deal with RFIs and clarifications and issues on other projects. He is specifically geared towards the Beverly Hills High School campus from DLR. The, the impact of delaying this, I think would not, I want to say, I don't think it would stop the job. I think it could impact DLR's ability to service the job. I monitor their monthly invoicing very closely. In the run up to this true up for the last four months, their monthly invoicing has been very, very small. I don't think to the tune to support the service and staff that are applied to this project. And that's why they've been, they're asking to do this true up at this time. I was, our position was, well, can we wait? Can we wait till the summer? We have more bidding to do and then do a full true up at that time. Their principals contacted me and asked if we could do it phases in this true up now, since the work is under full production and they could kind of straighten out their books from a cash flow standpoint on services being provided.
Okay, so Mrs. Marcus, is that it? Or you have another question?
No, that's, that's good answer, David. Thank you.
Okay, and then, so just to follow up on that last statement that you just made, Jeff, is, have, has their work been completed for the, for the, for the amount that they're asking for us to approve? Or are they, or it's still in production? I think I heard you say it was still in production.
The production that I'm talking about is the actual construction project that's ongoing.
So not the architectural design?
Yeah, so we have one full time and then two other fifty percent time staff members from DLR that are servicing on a daily basis the design clarification needs for B1, B2, B3, B4. All four buildings are in production as we speak. So they, and that will be that way all the way through the conclusion of the projects, plus their structural engineers and associate electrical engineers. So our jobs are in full production. We have over a hundred and fifteen men per day building here on the campus. And those daily clarifications, those daily design directions is what they provide as the construction moves forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pileman. We're going to move for a vote if there's no more discussion, and I don't think there is at this point. So, Mr. Margot, we're going to start with you. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Okay, and I am going to vote yes as well. Thank you. I think that concludes our meeting on agenda items and approvals. We're going to move on to communication for board members. Mr. Board Member, student Board Member, Mr. Recupero.
Yes, just very quickly, I mean, every week, the high school ASB will be accepting photo and video submissions based on a theme. Last week's was, how do you quarantine? And Dr. Bregge included it in his report. I suggest everyone go watch it. It's really fun. Everyone is silly and having a good time and it's nice to see everyone's smile. Also, I know it can feel like information is being, you're being bombarded with information from teachers, the district, and even the news, but just please do your best to stay updated. The Instagram accounts are a great way to stay updated. They're constantly being updated by Ms. Starkinson, her wonderful interns. So please make sure to check those out. And lastly, let's get through this together as a community and all do our part, be safe, and take care.
Thank you, Mr. Recupero. Mr. Margot?
That was very Chris Cuomo of you, Thomas. Good job. Dr. Bregge, do you happen to have any of the photos that we had talked about with the, the Pro West?
Yep, I sure do.
Okay, so we, I, this didn't get on to the agenda as formal, but we'll do it during these communications. As we had a small update from the facility subcommittee that we just wanted to share. We had not met a lot due to circumstances in Colorado and such, and obviously the position we're all in now. But we did meet and we were talking about the lengths that the construction team is taking during this crisis. So some of the things, and Dr. Bregge will share some photos, and I'm just going to read over this quick list here of what they are doing, what our construction side is doing on a daily basis. They are disinfecting the high-touch surface areas and tracking this cleaning with a daily log. They are taking temperatures of every worker as well as the team concept and Pro West staff every morning. If anyone reads over a hundred point four, they get sent home. They have not had to send anyone home yet. They have been holding COVID nineteen informational and safety talks on a regular basis. They have installed COVID nineteen informational protocol signage at all the gates. They require everyone to wear a mask or fabric covering of their faces. They follow all protocols that relates to social distancing. They're asking everyone to wash hands repeatedly. There's extra hand washing stations on all projects. They have, anybody that has experienced a possible exposure or is sick is not allowed on the job site. They are policing the job site cleanup in a more stringent manner. They've distributed an infectious disease response plan to all employees and they're in daily contact with subcontractors as well, reiterating the protocol and informing them of all revisions that are required. So, and they're conducting meetings often on go-to meetings about these protocols. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, to the public's attention, because we did vote on a resolution earlier regarding the continual construction on our site and to let everybody know how we are handling it as a district. And I do know that a lot of public works agencies are continuing to do construction during the, during the crisis. So you'll see a lot of public works people out there in the city and the county doing, or doing their job. So we just wanted to share that with everybody and thank you. And everybody, stay healthy, stay well. Hopefully, we'll be together soon.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. I'd encourage you to put it on the agenda next time. I think it'd be great information to share with the committee and to post it. So I'm sure we can find that information in the facilities website, correct? It's probably already posted. But, you know, next time, just by all means, chime in and we'll make room for you on the agenda because I think it's always better to walk the committee through these pictures as you just did. So thank you for that.
Yeah, it was an oversight, an oversight, I apologize.
No, no, we have time next time. Thank you. Okay, and Mr. Spitz?
Yes, I don't know whether these comments will get out to the public or how they will get out to the public, but I just want to mention that our school community is doing a great job of avoiding infections under this crisis. And we're doing a great job and we have to keep it up. So I want to just mention to the students and to the parents keep doing what you're doing, stay in, and we'll get over this thing without any infections, God willing.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz, for that. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
I just wanted to wish congratulations to Mr. Friend and his amazing group of students on the Math National Competition, the perfect score. I was at Beverly Vista the morning they were leaving to go to the competition. So I got to see them off and the students were nervous and excited and it was so wonderful to see them get on that, on that bus to go off to this competition and now know that they had such a great performance that day. I want to congratulate the LA County Science and Engineering Fair winners. And also thank Coach Franks for the varsity soccer virtual awards. I watched a bunch of it and I saw a bunch of pictures. It was really innovative and that's the type of thing that we need so much of right now when we're feeling a little bit disconnected. I wanted to thank the staff and teachers, the school site admin, the parent-students cabinet, and my board colleagues for such tremendous work over the last week and a half trying to make sure that this home learning plan gets through, through the negotiations with BHGA and also our BHGA partners and negotiating team. I'm really happy where we landed. I think it's on the side of students, which is really always the place that we want to be. So thank everyone for your efforts in making that happen. And Dr. Bregge, just to go back to your presentation tonight, the use of Instagram is now more, I guess, for young people than Facebook. This is wonderful but saddening for me at the same time because I really like Facebook. Although I will say during this pandemic and all the time at home, I have been using Instagram a little bit more. I think it's a great way that everyone has been able to stay connected. I can tell you for sure, even despite the distancing and not being able to be face to face, I have felt very connected to my community through all of these different social media platforms. So I think it's really, it's helped with the human piece, as you said. And it's very creative. I've seen amazing creative things from our teachers and from our site staff. And so I really, I appreciate that everyone's adapting and trying to keep it positive. Thank you.
Mrs. Marcus?
Missy, okay. Well, everybody sort of takes away my thunder by the time they get around to me. So a lot of the things that I wanted to talk about have already been mentioned. Having been sequestered at home, I find that I'm getting a lot of needlepoint done, a lot of reading. Anybody wants the name of some good books? I can give you some good books because I've been doing a little more reading than I normally do. I do just want to make one point. I've been reading the CSBA newsletters that come out daily and I have to tell you that we, as the Beverly Hills with our two point O plan, should be so proud because I'm seeing comments where some people are still arguing over even teaching. They haven't even made settlements. It's unbelievable what's going on in some of the other districts around the state. And we are so far head and heels over everybody else that it's amazing. And I really want to compliment everybody who worked. else, that it's amazing, and I really want to compliment everybody who worked on the 2.0, on our negotiations with the union, the way we were able to achieve it, and I just want to say that we should be very proud of ourselves, because I think if the other districts were to look to Beverly Hills, they probably would, probably, and one other thing, I think we should be very grateful, that we put the one-to-one iPads in when we did, and made sure that they were there, how fortuitous of us, because the districts around the state, many of them are really scrambling right now, and having a lot of trouble with that. So, just a couple of points that I wanted to make, and I thank you, and I wish you all, stay safe, stay home, and please, please, do everything that you're supposed to do, thank you.
Right, so thank you so much for that as well, and to Ms. Walker Schuman for her comments, being last, I have very little to say, but to say ditto to what the four of you have already said, or the five of you, sorry, Thomas, you were included in those comments as well. So, I just to reiterate, and I want to thank the board for all of your work, I know that we've been meeting each other quite often, and it takes, it takes a lot of time to do the work that we've been doing, and so, and to lead, and to support the institution, so thank you for your, for your effort, for your time, and your commitment. I, I recognize it's been quite a bit these last few weeks. And again, on behalf of the board, I want to thank Dr. Bregge and BHGA, and his, you know, Dr. Bregge's administrative, executive team for leading and coming up with, you know, representing the board's wishes, the board in this, in this whole endeavor of securing this 2.0 plan, and getting an agreement with BHGA, I think that that was very important for us to do as, as a district, and so I'm, I'm grateful and humbled by, by the activities that have taken place, and, and where we have landed, so it's been, it's been, we're in a good place, and we should celebrate that, so thank you. And with that, I'd like to say goodnight to everybody, and we will see each other soon, stay safe, and near, and we'll be seeing each other sooner than later. Thank you, everybody, take care.
Goodnight.
Goodnight, thank you.